Let me call the Berkeley City Planning Commission to order for its regular meeting of Tuesday, June 27, 2017. Thank you. Would you all stand for the pledge to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I have a roll call, please?
Martin Smith?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Dean Smith?
Here.
Tengary?
Here.
Kapalinski?
Here.
Murad?
Present.
Buckler?
Here.
Barnett?
Present. Now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
By Commissioner Richardson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shadle. Is there any discussion on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Kapalinski?
Yes.
Martin Smith?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Dean Smith?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the May 23, 2017, meeting.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Kavinsky, is there a second?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Dean Smith. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Richardson?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Kapalinski?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Dean Smith?
Yes.
Martin Smith?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Any communications?
The only item was information on the Michigan Association of Planning Spring Institute.
Okay, thank you.
Everything else is related to items on tonight's agenda.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain citizens' comments. Any citizens who would care to address the Planning Commission on any topic not on this agenda this evening may do so at this time. Step up to the microphone, state your name and city of residence. Well, I don't see any citizens rushing to the microphone, so we'll cancel it. We'll go through that item. Communication, or we've done that. Let's move right into site plan review.
Site plan review, SP 0517, Justin Snyder, 2766 11 Mile Road, northeast corner of 11 Mile and Kipling, is requesting site plan approval for a building addition in the 11 Mile District.
Is a partitioner here?
Yes.
Step up to the microphone, please. Are you the architect?
No, I'm the owner of the building.
Is the architect here?
He's not, he couldn't attend.
Okay, state a little bit about what you want to do here.
I don't know if you're familiar with the building. It's at the corner of Kipling, 11 Mile. It's been in a state of disrepair for the last several years, and it's in need of some improvements. My business is located there, along with a couple of the tenants. The previous building owner lost one of the tenants due to roofing issues with leaks and all, so part of this whole addition, although it's not very big, it's just a vestibule addition, would be to re-roof and improve the overall look of the building.
Are there comments from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Martin Smith?
Is this replacing the porch?
Yes.
That's out there now?
It is.
Okay. And is it about, I didn't measure it, is it about the same dimensions, on the same slab?
It's very, well, it won't be on the same slab. I need to have foundations for the new structure, but...
There's no foundations under the posts now?
I don't know, it doesn't look like it.
Okay.
It needs help.
How much bigger is it than the...
Not much at all. Yeah, I mean, it's basically the same footprint, give or take.
There's no setback issues from the road or anything?
No.
I wouldn't think so, he's set back pretty far.
So far back, yeah.
Okay. Okay. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else? Commissioner Tengary?
I'd just like a little description of, just for everybody's benefit, of the relationship of this vestibule to parking areas and other things on the site, because we can't really see the rest of the site on these plans, so if you could just describe how close it is to the parking and all that.
So the, this is on the 11 Mile side of the building. The parking lot is on the rear of the building, so it's not in close proximity, but the current tenants utilize that front door quite a bit and want to create a vestibule a little, you know, for efficiency, lose a lot of heat and cooling when you open those doors, and aesthetically, the building, in my opinion, needs some help, so it would be nice to clean up a building on 11 Mile, in my opinion.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Dean Smith?
Just one quick question. I noticed your exterior door will open to the outside?
Yes.
Is that, that's on purpose, right? So you don't want to have the, push it in and avoid the snow and stuff?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's just...
You have enough room to do the other door swing?
Exactly, exactly. We'll be changing the doors on the backside of the building, but that's just, we're not putting any sort of addition or anything on that, and we'll build an internal vestibule there for the same, you know, reasons for efficiency, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shadle?
I appreciate your efforts in updating the building. Just one quick question as far as what type of material are you going to be using?
So currently, there's siding on the building below the windows. There's a product called longboard siding. It's a wood look, it's a little, gives it a little more of a modern upgrade architecturally. It'll enhance the current brick that's there, and then there'll be windows, clear story windows at the top of the vestibule, and then, you know, break metal surround at the top.
And you plan to take that all the way down to ground level, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Martin Smith?
Are there any other improvements to the facade of the building that you're making at this time, or is this it?
Well, you know, for roofing, it needs...
You did mention roofing.
Yeah, and so that's going to be, I'm going to go with a metal roofing product. Architecturally, it looks, in my opinion, better than the current shingle that we have on there, and the shingles are in disrepair, as well as the flat roof section on the middle of the building, so that'll all be replaced.
You're going to do the whole building in metal?
Just the, you know, just the gable section around the three sides. It's only three-sided with the gable, and it's open on the east side, but you can't see that.
Okay.
Question. What is the nature of your business?
I'm a commercial general contractor.
Okay. Do you see any need to put handicap access, include handicap access in your ingress and egress?
Honestly, it, just by design, it will meet ADA. You know, the current doors are not, they create a problem for at least one of the visitors to one of the tenants, so as far as ADA access, it'll be, it'll meet all ADA requirements. It's just smart to do it when you're adding an addition like this, a vestibule.
All right. I guess I'm the one that's going to be the devil's advocate here. I'm trying to understand why it has to be so tall, and I'm trying to understand why it's not respecting the architecture of the building overall.
Well, you know, the height, it doesn't exceed the adjacent property height. It's, you know, there's people that, our mailman Rocky, his family lives around there and has for a long time, and he's told his relatives that, you know, it's a building on 11 Mile and Kipling, and nobody can picture the building, because architecturally, it's in, it's in bad shape. This will give it an enhanced feature, and I think it'll respect the existing architectural features with the brick, and also enhance it and bring it a slightly more modern look, not, it'll be very tastefully done with, you know, wood grain products that will mesh well with the metal roofing and the existing red brick.
I just have difficulty with it. I'm not impressed with it at all, but it's up to the Planning Commission however they want to proceed, and we'll see what happens. Mr. Chair? Mr. Dean Smith?
That particular building is almost invisible. It's, there is no architecture. It's a box with some windows. Putting an awning on it is much, better than awning, a vestibule.
I don't have a problem with a vestibule, but I think it needs to be in character with the building, and I don't see that this is...
If it were in character with the building, I think it would be...
Watch out there.
Not at all complimentary. This, to me, is a dramatic improvement over not only what's there, but what could be there.
Whatever. What is the desire of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Martin Smith?
I move we approve SP 0517. I don't see any conditions on that approval unless someone has something.
Second to the motion.
I would support that.
You support it. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Mr.?
I would like to say, I wish there was a better batch of drawings for this, or, you know, there's not much here, and it took me a while to figure out what exactly it was for such a small 10 by 8, 10 by 9, or 10 by 10 project, so I just wish there was more here, but anyway, we got the gist of it.
Commissioner said that the applicant had submitted sketches to me, and I understood what it was, and so he asked, "How much more do I need to do?", and I said, "I think that this works, just have them sealed and you should be fine", so I apologize that it wasn't a more robust package.
We figured it out, but I just wasn't sure in the beginning, so...
Any other discussion? Take a roll call vote.
Shadle?
Yes.
Martin Smith?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Kapalinski?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Dean Smith?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Barnett?
No.
Did we have a second?
Yes.
The good Smith.
Boston, all that discussion.
Dean Smith, second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Item number two.
Item number two is site plan review, SP 0417, Mark Earl, regarding the south 14 feet of Lot 151 and all of Lot 152 of the Berkeley School Park subdivision, tax ID number 2518-105003, east side of Greenfield between Beverly and Wiltshire, is requesting site plan approval for construction of a new two-family dwelling unit in the Greenfield District.
Is a partitioner here this evening?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Do you want to explain exactly what you're proposing here?
I'm proposing a two-family duplex on a vacant parcel on Greenfield Road that I intend to keep as an investment and dip my hat into the landlord arena. I am also a resident of Berkeley Henley Avenue.
All right, I'll turn it over to the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chair? I have a question for you, Amy.
Yes.
Is the front yard setback adequate? It wasn't clear from the comments.
Yes, it is. It's actually, yes, it is, it is sufficient. In my report, I was indicating that you can see that there's a very large right-of-way there, so I just wanted you to understand why, but yes, the front yard is sufficient.
And then one question for the applicant. So you're putting in this nice new duplex. Would you consider adding some landscaping to spruce up the front?
Of course. I am here to collaborate and find out exactly what you would do. My intent is to keep it within the, as a residential structure, even though it is a two-family structure, my idea with the front garages was to keep as much green space in the backyard, allowing privacy for each unit, as well as having the garage kind of buffer the noise from Greenfield.
It looks like you could fit in maybe a shrub or two?
Yes, with the, the main drive to the garages combined, there is some green space on the north and south side, which would obviously have some landscaping, and you can fault me for some of the shortcomings on some of the overviews. I'm still training and learning a new CAD program and in an effort to get this process moving along, knowing that it may be a challenge. I just haven't got into the total placement of landscaping on the drawing.
Okay, thanks.
But my intent is for it to blend with the residential structures that are on the street, although it will be a little taller. I believe it's going to be a nice-looking addition to Greenfield Road.
Thank you.
She just gestured.
Driving the stairs, the attic stairs. Are they fold-up attic stairs?
No, they would be permanent two-code stairwell that is L-shaped that goes up. I know some of the plans may be confusing. I had purchased a set, and then I had modified it with some of the changes that I wanted to present to you as far as pushing the forward entry a little closer so I could put a coat closet in. That will also allow me some room to adjust the hallway on the second floor in moving the laundry closet towards the back and giving me a doorway and a permanent set of stairs up to that bonus space.
Is your intention to build out that bonus space at time of construction?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Dean Smith?
As I look at the buildings and the other single-family homes up and down Greenfield Road, the one that you proposed would be the only one that has a front-loading garage, and the way it's designed, you couldn't build that same building in one of the neighborhoods because you have too much garage door space as a part of facing the house. Did you look at running a garage or a driveway to the back of the property? And I understand the noise issues. I've been out there a couple times and just sat on the sidewalk, or stood on the sidewalk, and listened, and there is a lot of racket from Greenfield Road, but some of that can be handled with windows and whatnot, but to have the garages to the front is absolutely inconsistent with other single-family homes or the duplexes we do have in the city. Could you comment on that? Yeah, a lot of the duplexes that I see that are within the city don't have garages at all. They really have separate driveways. The challenge that I was trying to do is keep it in tune with the neighborhood, with open green space, and actually having a usable backyard. The bigger challenge as I, as I looked for plans and tried to come up with a way to create this plan with a rear-loaded garage was it's ultimately going to eat up all of the green space in the back and along the sides to get it there, and then it becomes more of an issue of, are you paving the whole backyard to try and get into a garage? You have no green space. It ends up being a turnaround, if you will, a drive-around with driveways on both sides, and then I thought that would lead to an inconvenience to the neighbors in the rear with headlights and car noise, and I'm sure they would rather listen to kids playing in the backyard and occasional dog bark or chicken. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Martin Smith?
Amy?
Yes.
In the green, this is the Greenfield District, right?
Yes.
Is a duplex a special use in the Greenfield District?
No, it just requires site plan approval.
Okay, that's why we're here.
Right.
Okay, okay. What are the setbacks, side setbacks for, for the Greenfield District?
It would be, it depends on the height of the building, so if it's based upon, if, let's see, so to the north and south are single-family detached homes, so it requires a 15-foot distance, the proposed building is 30 feet or less and next to single-family houses. Does that answer your question?
So the 5 plus the 10, which we see all over town?
Yeah.
In single-family houses in other districts, applies here?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It would be, if the building was taller, there would be a greater distance required.
Understood.
Okay.
Now, we have a 25-foot setback to the garage, the face of the garage wall, and also, as we allow in other districts, a covered porch, open porch can protrude into that.
Yes.
So it's very similar in this situation. Okay. Now, as far as the garage openings, the width of the door, our ordinance says 45, the garage door cannot exceed 45 percent of the...
Single-family, yeah.
Okay, well, they're at about 41 percent.
Right.
Nobody likes these, you know, nobody likes to see, as you know, and we don't like the garage door being the main element. This is a different situation being on Greenfield Road. We understand that, but it does comply. It's less than 45 percent. What are the materials? I don't see anything on here other than something that looks like siding and something else that looks like shingles, maybe something that looks like brick. What are the materials and what are the colors?
The colors, I brought a sample of the stone I'd like to put on the front, as well as, so it's basically going to be all stone and cement siding that would be painted.
Can we see the samples?
Sure.
Is that the, what looks like brick here?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a preca, or that's a cast stone.
Right, it's, it's put on a plaster Bronco base, and I pretty much referenced that in just the cross-section, what I was intending to do with the stone or brick veneer, thin veneer, veneer, and having the cement siding, and I'd like to accent the gables with cedar shake, and I want to differentiate the units on the sidewalls and each unit, one having a lap siding, the other having a cement panel simulated T-111 look, just to bring some individuality to each unit and complement the textures.
Okay.
As far as colors, I'm leaning towards a light steel blue to go with the stone, as well as a light green, not key lime green, but a steel wild green.
Well, this is a perfect example of putting all the important notes on the staple side of the sheet. Sometimes you unroll them far enough so you don't see the stuff. Okay, you said something that piqued my interest. Can I see what the siding looks like? T-111 is kind of a nasty word in Berkeley. T-111 is plywood with grooves in it, and we don't, we don't really like that. But is, are these, are these... These are cement panels. Okay, but they're only, they are four by eight. What's the whole panel look like? I just see a big... Would you go back and pick up the microphone? Can we, can I, can I pass this around?
Yeah, pass it around.
So this is not T-111, this is a cement board.
It is, right, it's a solid cement product. It's, the idea in keeping the units as rental and owning them is I don't want the maintenance as much as you don't, and all the trim work will be PVC board, so I'm trying to eliminate any moisture wicking up, peeling paint prematurely and rotting the siding materials.
So you're using the graves, the graves, the grooves, eight inches on center?
Yes, and again, it's, it's not, it mimics the T-111 pattern.
Don't say T-111 here.
Okay, the...
Don't want to mimic it.
It mimics a reverse bird and button pattern, and the buttons are probably an eighth inch deep at the most, probably not even that, more like a 16th.
Well, in my humble opinion, I'd rather see a horizontal siding than a vertical siding. That's just my opinion, and that's what's, that's what's represented here. I don't mind the fiber cement, the fiber cement board at all, but the only reason we're having this conversation is you said that, that phrase.
Let me ask you this, if I stuck with the lap siding and the cement, would the commission have issue with each unit having their own color?
Either that, or, or maybe your bay window is a different color than the field, or, yeah, I don't care if they're a different color. But when you say lap siding, here, and go to a eight or 10-inch...
Correct.
...cement boards instead of a panel?
Correct.
Yeah, I'd rather not see the panel, but that's, I'm just one of nine. I'd rather not see a four-by-eight panel. It's just, it's just, they just don't age well, and they, they move in the sun, and it just doesn't look right, so... But if you want to, if you went to a, I guess it'd be an eight-inch horizontal lap board, that would be fine by me, and keep in neutral colors. I'd like you to submit the colors to staff. We probably don't have to see them again unless there's something that they deem, the staff deems that we have to see, but I think it'd be good to put a color board together and submit the colors.
Okay.
Mr. Richardson?
Sir, have you given any thought to running, running stone around the, the whole circumference of your house, maybe two feet?
It's, it's cost in trying to create an environment where we have some affordable housing. It certainly could be done, but it is much more expensive.
So you'd consider it...
If I was using your money, yes, I would, I'd be more than happy to clad it all in the stone.
If you were using my money, you wouldn't have anything this good. The other thing is, I didn't happen to notice any lights illustrated on your drawings. Are you going to use carriage lights on your porch, or recess lights, or what are you going to...
No, I was thinking recess lights in the overhang, one over the garage doors, and then one at the entry door. The idea is to downlight it, I don't want, you know, there's not going to be floodlights because it's on Greenfield, or motion detectors or anything like that. It would be trying to, again, keep it consistent with the single-family homes around.
And as far as the rear door wall patio area, most likely just a single coach lamp.
I'd like to second the comment about green space. I think you can probably do a little bit more with the green space, even if that means putting a divider down the driveway in the middle between the two units. I think that would be a nice touch. Also, I'd like to see...
to see if you could possibly do additional window in the second floor. Like, there's room there to put at least one, if not two, additional windows there, so that--
On the non-party wall side, I take it?
On the sides, yep. On the north and south.
I did add one for the hallway from the plans that I had purchased, and with the bonus rooms having the windows. I guess I'd like to see where you would--
The sitting room?
--like those.
You said the sitting room?
That could be done.
Getting additional windows would really help.
Mr. Chair? With your bonus room--
Yes.
Your window will be large enough to be an egress window?
Correct.
Is that, that would be--
Yeah, exactly. Tenants move in, they may need, have a need for an extra bedroom or whatnot, so exactly that space would meet the egress--
That would be something that, would be a stipulation that--
I actually had a question about the front entrance. What's the step up to the front entrance? Is it, it didn't look like it was that grade, but is it six inches up?
It's going to be one rise, less than eight and a quarter inches from the sidewalk into the, to the units. It'll be a foot into grade with 12 inches of black, and then concrete is the subfloor, if you will, for the first floor of the units.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I tend to recoil from the front garages myself, but they do meet code in this area, and I guess it's somewhat mitigated by the fact that even though you've got the front garage, you've also managed to get a porch in there, which is a little more what I think of when I think of Berkeley. But I like the idea of differentiating the two units. I'm with Mr. Martin Smith on the materials, but, but yeah, I like the idea of differentiating the two units.
Mr. Chair?
I think I agree with some of my other commissioners that I really don't like the big front garage doors, and I know back when we were doing a bunch of work on, on some of the zoning and codes in regards to that, some of it was we're pushing for front porches because we like to see people out, a lot, a lot of people, including myself, like to sit on a front porch, talk to neighbors as they go by. I don't think you're going to have that much in this district, so I think it'll be okay. I agree with the window, and, okay, just wanted to verify that. Okay, that was it that I had.
Martin Smith?
Really going to put the furnace and the water heater in the garage? I mean, that's done in other parts of the country. I basically don't see it much around here without an insulated enclosure.
Yeah, I was, I'm debating maybe exactly enclosing that off and making a closet where would actually be a conditioned space, so any main trunk lines could go across the garage ceiling.
Not mention your plumbing lines.
Correct, and that's another one of the challenges, is where do I bring in the water meter, and I've got to protect it as well.
Okay, just, I mean, that's not our business. I just, I noticed that the plant house is from Portland, so they may do that in Portland. You see it all over the country, but not in those--
I can appreciate that.
That's just, that's probably not a good idea. And no basement, huh?
No basement.
Mr. Tangary?
As long as we're going to have the garage doors in front, you're showing windows in the garage doors here. That is your actual plan.
Correct. I don't know that you can avoid not backing out under Greenfield, so I can understand the no front-loaded garage, but the reality is, is as long as all those houses have been there, everybody's been backing out. The nice thing about this location is it is far enough away from the light at Kettlepa, as well as 12 Mile. In the times that I've been over there with my vehicle, you get a nice break where you can back out there relatively easily. And again, it conserves the green space and the privacy for the people who will ultimately be living in the units.
I have a couple of questions for you. I'm wondering, the windows seem very plain. There's no mullions, there's no nothing, there's no shutters or anything. Actually, the garage doors look the best of the whole thing, and the front door, and I'm trying to figure out whether you're going to do anything to improve the, it just looks awfully plain.
I think if you familiar with a few of the homes that I've built in Berkeley in previous years, it's been quite a while, but plain isn't, isn't typically what I do. Mutton bar is not a problem. The windows will be a quality Anderson window, wood, not an inexpensive vinyl. Shutters, maybe, probably not. I will probably accent it with the cement shake siding in the gables and dress it up that way, do something with the trim. We could certainly set them back out, bigger sills, things like that, but shutters are places for bees to nest and weather to get behind, and I think that may date it a little bit. That's just my opinion.
Is anybody in the audience care to address the planning commission on this? Sure, step up to the microphone, please, and state your name and city of residence, and you can have--
Hi, my name is Mary Janich. I live at 3132 Greenfield for 45 years. His building will be next door to me, so I would like to look at the plans, if I may. Is that okay?
I'm Marlene Smith. I live next door, I'm lot 151, I believe, or 1.
She's next door to me.
And we're curious about the fencing. Right now, we have the cyclone fencing. What's going to separate our property from this gentleman's property? We have the old-fashioned--
You might address the fencing?
I intend on doing a vinyl privacy fence, six foot tall. White, yes.
We're having a conversation. Why don't we pick up the microphone and we can, we can all sort of--
Ask your question.
Ask your question, and we, thank you.
You're east of our street sidewalk, correct, sir? Well, because we have that 27 or 14 feet, is it, Amy?
That helps.
This is where the unit is. This is your driveway here. My driveways will be basically--
I mean, there wasn't a circle, no, that wasn't there.
So, totally--
This is my driveway?
That is the one that's it right now.
Right.
Your driveway's actually over here, but your extra one on your vacant lot is that one right there.
And your driveways are going to be up here?
Right. Basically where this bump out is, those are the two garages. The dotted line represents the--
What's going to be here?
This is going to be all grass. So you're still going to have full access, obviously, to your property, and nothing is happening except the fencing on the property line.
Oh, I, I can make her a copy. I need, I need that. Okay.
No, I'm a rookie too.
I'm happy to make you a copy. I just, I need that for the record.
Can I get a copy of the plans?
He can have, she can have mine.
At that, you're getting lots of copies.
There you go.
Anyone else? Anyone else want to talk? What is the desire of the planning commission here?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Martin Smith?
Find us here. Here it is. We move, we approve site plan, SP 0407. Thank you, 1-7, can't read. With a couple of items. Can I strategically put them on page eight? There are some DPW comments, some fire inspector comments that have to be, I'm sure you're aware of them. We want to see horizontal lap siding in lieu of the four-by-eight panels, vertically oriented, and submit, I'd like to have you submit the colors and materials to staff for review, and I have absolutely no problem if you want to break it up with two different color sightings. Sighting, that's a good thing because it breaks up the mass of the building. And there were a couple other items I heard.
Second floor window.
Oh, second floor window be egress window? Thank you.
Oh, no.
The bonus room windows, both be egress windows.
Third floor egress window? That's good.
Some additional green space.
Can you define that?
Sure. The applicant providing some sort of landscaping in the front yard, and something to break up the shared drive, whether it's green space or decorative pavement.
Okay, you're talking about the very wide driveway?
Yes.
Could we word it as a green belt, a ribbon between the driveways? With plantings?
I'd like, I'd like the fence to be in there too, the privacy fence.
The six-foot vinyl vertical privacy fence?
Yes.
It is on the plant.
It's on the line, okay.
We were going to add, there was a comment to add a second floor window to the sitting room?
Second floor sitting window, sitting room window.
And then mullions to the windows?
Mullions and--
Mr. Chair?
Do we want to go that far in being the design police?
Yeah. Thank you.
And I would be fine with those just on the front of the building.
Yeah, that's fine with just the front. I need something.
I heard yes and no.
Well, if there's no objection from the applicant, I'm going to go for it.
And that is referring to what?
Mullions.
Buttons on the, on the windows?
On the windows on the front of the building, yeah.
My choice of style, of course.
Well, you do, you do have a track record, and obviously, yeah, you do have a track record of doing that, so, okay.
Thank you.
Is that everything?
Recess lighting in the front.
He's doing that already.
He'll do that. He'll do that. He has that. That's a rather long list, but--
Do you have any, all, Amy? All right. Do we need to read it back?
I don't have a support.
Mr. Chair?
I'll second. Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Virginia, you want to read it back?
Do you want it read back, or are you all set?
I think I'm all set.
I think we can take a vote on it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dean Smith?
Just a question for the applicant. You, you've heard all the conditions, and you have no issue with any of them?
No, I'm good with all of it.
Okay, thank you.
Call the roll.
Okay. Buckler?
Yes.
Tangary?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Martin Smith?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Dean Smith?
Yes.
Kipalansky?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number three.
Item number three is site plan review, SP 0617 Arch Diocese of Detroit for Our Lady of La Salle, 2599 Harvard, south side of Harvard, between Kipling and Coolidge, requesting site plan approval for a new parking lot in the office district. Mr. Chairman? The applicant submitted plan, thank you. The applicant submitted plans for the entire La Salle property as one site plan, but since it not only has different parcels, but actually different zoning--
Right.
We need to break it into, so I think the applicant's intent is to give one presentation, but the planning commission needs to act on it in separate items.
You've got to act on it in three different pieces.
Yeah, given the zoning.
Mr. Chair? Before we commence this, on this item, I would like to disclose that I'm, I am a member of La Salle Parish, and I did receive a written notice to attend a meeting regarding this project. I have never discussed this, this project or the proposed PUD with anybody in the administration of the parish, ever. I don't feel that I need to recuse myself, but I want to make a record of my membership, and if anybody has any objections, I will, I will heed their objections.
Any objections from anybody in the planning commission?
Mr. Chair? I'm also a member of the parish, so, same thing, pretty much like Mr. Richardson. I haven't really discussed this with anybody. I was invited to that meeting, and I did not attend it, so.
Hello, I'm Mary McCormick with CM Partners Architects. We're assisting the parish on the parking and the site plan.
You're going to start with--
Presentation.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, you're going to want the mic.
Take it off, and you can walk around with it. You can walk around with it.
I'll work off mine. You can review the large one. Thank you.
I can pop that off if you're worried about it. It's up to you. Whatever makes lucky.
I have it. Thank you, Amy.
There you go.
Thank you. The existing site plan shows the majority of the parking to the north of the church complex. With the proposed development, we have the demarcation line here along this bisecting road through the site, and we are looking at, we evaluated the parking requirements for the church building, the present office building, parish office building, and the former convent building. In so doing, it was determined that we needed 21 spaces for the office building, approximately 12 spaces for the convent building, and we needed 143 spaces for the church building. What we did to accommodate that was to address the parking, the proposed parking, along the, in an L-shaped format around the former convent building to the south of Harvard, and in so doing, connect with a road that would connect to the existing driveway to, that's offset from the garage off of the former convent building, and this provided 98 spaces. We also actually are recreating an entrance to the church on the south side of Harvard, and in so doing, we have a horseshoe drive that would come in off of Harvard for-- for the purposes of the hearse parking for funerary procession, as well as providing some barrier-free parking for the needs of the parishioners. We also increased the angle parking off of Harvard, so we actually have a total of 170 spaces for the parish. We do understand that the daily need for parish, the parish office building and the needs of the parish is approximately 40 spaces. Current Sunday requirements for parking for the parish is estimated at 90 spaces and then for the Christmas and Easter flow, we actually have estimated approximately 170 spaces. So this is what we have right here. Future parking, we have on the parcel that currently is a green area right here, but that currently is not included in the count. If you look in this, on this sheet right here, the darker gradation would be the parking for the development to the north and the parish parking would actually be south of Harvard and along Harvard and in this enclave and then the two rows for, right just east, west of the current parish office building.
That's that green space right now?
No, the green space will be left alone at present.
Will be what?
That will remain the current playground at present.
Oh, that's going to remain?
Yes.
Questions for the applicants? I just had one and when I looked at it, I wasn't sure. The rear parking on the south side of the building? Yeah. Down there. To the east, it does not connect to the driveway where the garages are.
It, actually, the revised site plan, it does connect. We do have a ring road all the way around the building.
So we are going to have a ring road?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right. That was my only question, really.
Mr. Chair? I had a follow-up question on that ring road, actually. How wide is that? The new, the new portion there, right next to the former convent building? Is it supposed to be one-way? It's hard to tell if it's wide enough to accommodate two.
No, it's a one-way driver.
Right around.
Correct.
Out or in?
Out.
The residence that, there's a residence to the west of that.
That's correct.
Does that belong to, is that?
It does belong to the parish.
It is for the parish?
Correct.
Okay. I wasn't sure. I thought it was, but I wasn't sure. Okay. Now, from what I understand, is the convent's going to become, the church offices are going to be there?
Yes.
And it's a group of fires that are going to move over to the building on the?
Right. The intent, the intent would be to switch occupancies so that the fires would move to the current parish office building, a smaller building over here, and that the parish offices would move to the former convent with modifications.
Okay. And I take it there's areas in there for meetings and what have you?
There will be.
There will be. Okay. So there's going to be some renovations inside that building.
Correct.
Do you have a timetable for when this work will start or what's it hinging on?
I believe, per the review tonight, then we would move into engineering proposals for the work that the parish would consider.
All right. Other comments from anyone? Mr. Tangeri?
Yes. I'm just looking at the lot on the south side of Harvard. I see two ways, two-way traffic coming in and then it kind of immediately goes over to the right and then immediately to the left. What kind of signage are we thinking of to show people that they've got to go to the right? Because I'm seeing traffic kind of coming dead on.
We'll have directional signage right on the asphalt.
On the asphalt?
Correct.
Are you going to have any posted signage as well on poles or, because I see you've got a little, I don't know if your intent is to make this an island or?
Right, right at the entrance, we could put pole signage.
Okay, because I'm pretty sure.
We weren't looking, we were not looking at integral curbs or islands within the lot. It was just striping, asphalt striping.
So I just think that some sort of vertical notice right in front of you is going to be necessary. Particularly given that even under the best of circumstances, pavement markings do fade. Guess I'll just, I'll throw this one out there. What prompted this parking reconfiguration? I think, I think it's important to kind of discuss it in the context of other moving parts, that's all.
Okay. Well, actually with the neighboring partner to the north, that there was a need for a shared parking in reviewing the whole complex and which is what we collectively worked on. So there's some shared parking on the westerly side of this lot, just west of the parish office building that'll be utilized by both parties and then likewise, that is why the projection, as well as the fact that the parish offices would be relocating to this larger structure and thereby the need would be for the parking and because of the displacement of the church parking, that's actually a closer directional to the church where our new entrance will be. So, was the logical location for the parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Martin Smith?
Could you flip to the next page, please? So the light gray is now the proposed church parking and the dark gray is the parking for the proposal, for the multifamily proposal?
Correct.
Boy, your parking's really got pushed away from your building. Your parishioners happy with that?
Well, I will explain a little because, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. This parking over here in the distance from the church, okay? This parking over here in the distance from the church, that we're able to accommodate more from a closer location. This actually was and currently is the parking lot that feeds the majority of the parishioners come in from this way currently, so the whole orientation has changed. So this becomes the primary entrance to the church that then assists with the parking locations this way. So that was a design decision.
Okay. There's quite a few comments from the Public Safety Department and the DPW. Have you had, have you had any of those comments yet? Amy, they'll be getting a list of those or a letter regarding all these?
Yeah, I did send, I did send the applicant my comments, but I didn't have the other comments in time. Well, I didn't have them in time.
Well, I can go through them real quickly, the larger ones. The Public Safety has some, they're of course concerned about getting into this site in case of emergency. They have some concerns with the sharp right turns as you come down south. Nope, 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 the south property.
This way?
Yeah, you come in, you turn sharp right and sharp right again. He's a little concerned with some of the radiuses.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then also down the very southwest corner, some of the radiuses to get their equipment.
That can be modified. Actually, we were just providing a little bit of a back area right here for the home that the parish owns, so we can modify that corner to accommodate a radius.
Yeah, the southwest corner may need something, may need something too. And I won't go through the whole thing. You'll get this.
All right.
But there is some, there is some issues they feel regarding access with their equipment. They would also like to see at the exit of the lot, and I assume this is the south lot, there's, they say no left turn signs. That's a sign. On the south side, south side of Harvard at your, at your two exit points. Now, probably a lot of your parishioners come from the west, so I don't know if that's really, makes a lot of sense. You're pretty centrally located in the southern part of Berkeley, so that's something to be discussed, but it's just a comment they had. DPW brought up the fact that you're going to require stormwater detention.
Correct.
And looking at the site, it's probably going to be underground.
Yes.
He's asking about turning templates much, for the equipment, much like the Public Safety did. And there's no handicap, barrier-free spaces.
We did the handicap on the revised site plan. We also put a bike rack in front of the former convent building as well as the parish office building.
Okay. So those are, some of those are some big items that need to be resolved. What, what is the extent of the six-foot wall, the maestory wall around?
That's along, in the office-owned area on the south side of the convent, the former convent building, along that lot line and then along the westerly lot line.
All the way up to what point? It kind of, it's hard to tell. It's drawing.
All the way up to the
Behind the?
Right before the yard, if you will, that we created for the existing residence there owned by the parish.
So there's the first on the east side, it looks like there's about 40 feet of wall, on my drawing at least, on the east side, very east side, southeast corner.
Yep.
Looks like there's about plus or minus 40 feet of wall. The entire, the entire south side and then north up to a point where the green space occurs.
Correct.
To be determined, because some of that may.
Yes, because we'll adjust for that radius.
Okay. And you've added barrier-free apartments, or apartments, spaces. What is the, what is the planned landscaping of what's left? There's a strip around the perimeter wall.
Actually, we would look at the cobble mulch.
Okay.
Yeah, for maintenance.
Not baseball-sized mulch. We had that come up a month or two ago. Refrain from that, please.
We also, in regards to site lighting, we would be using the zero cutoff wall packs, two per elevation, two on the elevation of the former convent building on the west side, two on the south side, the elevation on the south side, as well as three on the elevation, excuse me, on the office, existing parish office building, three in that location.
You don't see any need for, for any pole lights on this property? Because it's, it's, in the winter, it gets dark. You have a lot of, especially Christmas, your midnight mass and all that, all that. You don't see any need for some lighted parking?
We'll provide the option through our civil engineer for the parish to consider, but we were looking at.
I think, I think it'd be a good idea. What about snow removal? Where the heck are you going to put it? That's always a good.
We've got an area here and we've got an area over here and we've got the area behind in the courtyard of the former convent building and then we do have the current area, the green area where the playground is, right over here, some area over here.
Unless something happens down the road like that.
Correct. But this more than meets the criteria.
That's something else you may want to consider. How do you handle trash at this, at this, at this building? And how do you intend to now that it's all paved?
Well, I think that we would have a dumpster location back here on the south side of the convent building, just before the ring road. The sanitation could come around and pick up there in the parish office building and then likewise, towards the existing garage location in the current parish office building, there's an attached garage to the north, okay, and a dumpster location there for that use.
Okay. In your wall, I see an eight-inch concrete block with brick pattern, so that's a pattern brick. What color?
Well, the existing church property, they have the combination brick. It's also on some of the other walls and the piers across the street as we would pull from that pallet.
I have notes all over the place. I think, like to also see some dimension, some dimension lines across the aisles and parking lots. I see it. Some of the dimensions are on there, but some are missing. So let's get some strings of dimensions on here.
We'll do that.
DPW is going to want that and definitely Public Safety is going to want that.
We'll do that.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody else?
So you mentioned the, at where's the current parish office, there is a garage there.
Yes.
How are you planning on using that garage in the future and ingress and egress to that garage since currently how you get in and out is now going to be covered with parking spaces?
Well, we'll work on that as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Where's that garage?
There's a three-car garage.
To the north?
To the north of the existing parish office building on the north side. It's this appendage right here.
I think Mr. Smith covered most of everything else that I had for now, so.
Mr. Richardson?
Do you plan on locating like a striped crosswalk or asking for that to be done?
Yes, we were looking at the signage and the crosswalk, actually, two crosswalks. One from this location here and then one from this location here.
That wouldn't be a signal or anything, right?
No, we'll wait for the report and then we'll resubmit a site plan that identifies all of those safety items. We did speak about signage, about the no left turn in order to control the volume coming out into the south side of Harvard as well as coming up, so. We'll address that in the revised site plan.
Mr. Shadle?
And I know we can see this plan, but I'm not sure everyone else can. Just to be clear, you spoke of some of the parking is deemed to be shared parking.
This is shared.
And the other, could you specify exactly how many spaces that is?
Identified right here, we have five rows, so 85, 85 spaces.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Buckler, anything? Mr. Tangeri?
I wish I had that plan in front of me instead of this plan. Yeah, well, I mean, if there's going to be a dumpster enclosure somewhere, that's got to be put on the plan. All right, so there's 85 shared spaces out of a total of, I got, I've got notes all over the place about how many spaces there are.
85 for the parish exclusively.
Okay.
245 total.
245.
On the southern parcel, yeah.
Total 85 shared.
Not including the expansion.
Yeah, all right. I've just got so many numbers in front of me.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dean Smith?
Just a couple items. Public Safety did a bang-up job putting together analysis and then report of kind of impacts here. And one of the things that got me was with the parking lots to the south of Harvard, there's a series of utility lines that are right along the side of the street. Some, if not all of those, will have to be relocated to allow for the trucks to get in. Another thing that they mentioned was along the western border of the proposed parking lot, you may want to add a gate or something that would allow emergency vehicles access to the rear of the Harvard Commons Project. Or their utility lines would also have to, something back there to allow them to get in. I can't quote the report directly, but they were pretty thorough in how this all fits together and how it can be made to work quite nicely.
That's good. We'll incorporate those items.
Do you want to have a public comment?
Did you want to have a public comment? I was asking if you were going to have a public comment.
Public hearings for the PUD.
There's a special land use involved here.
There's a special land use back here, too. But I haven't, I'm not tackling that yet.
I'm in the site plan review right now.
I'm dealing with the south side.
Yeah, you're dealing with this lot.
Yeah, I'm dealing with the first lot. I'm not, haven't got to that yet. I want to take these one by one. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So, what is the desire of the Planning Commission with the south lot?
Everybody's looking at me again.
Mr. Chair? I can go first here. You want to go, Mr. Mure?
Yeah. You know, for me, right now, because we're looking at a plan, we know we've got a revised plan, we've given a lot of feedback on to what changes we want to see, I don't see myself how I could even approve this, even with conditions at this point. So, what I would like to do is have them come back with the revised plan and then take it from there.
Is that your making a motion? Is it your motion?
Postpone. Motion postponed.
Or I'm just bringing it up for discussion to see how the other commissioners feel about it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. The, Mr. Mure, I was, I, I agree. I would like to postpone SPO six dash seventeen. There's just, you know, we don't have the current plan. I've got notes all over my drawing.
Right, so do I.
We gave them a whole list of things to do, and they're receptive to these, but we just need something that's...
Okay.
A little more concrete.
Accurate, and so...
So, you want to make a motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone.
With? And you have a list of the conditions that we've...
Yes.
And Ms. Vanson will see that you get all the...
Yes.
...the documents from the thing?
Correct.
All right, now, let's talk about a date. Do you think you can have it ready by the next meeting of the Planning Commission, which is July something?
Yes, we can.
The twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Seventh.
When would those, Amy, when would those have to be in by? Just so they know.
Two weeks before, I think.
Two weeks before has been standard practice.
Okay. Is that doable?
Yes, it is.
All right.
Very good.
I have another question, applicant. I, Lois, you're planting some, some trees in front of the, the shared parking lot. Can you comment on what kind of trees or vegetation you've selected yet?
No.
Okay.
Just some vegetation.
Could you give that some thought?
Yes.
And include that in the revised plans?
Sure.
May include that.
Yep.
Okay. All right, let's take a roll call vote to postpone to the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-fifth, I think it is, July twenty-fifth.
Is it the twenty-fifth or twenty-seventh?
It's the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, all right. Yeah, that's right. It is twenty-fifth. I looked at that today.
Okay.
It is twenty-fifth.
Oh, it's a Tuesday, that's right.
Yeah, it's Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, all right.
You ready?
Yeah, let's go for it.
Okay. Shadle?
Yes.
Martin Smith?
Yes.
Muread?
Yes.
Kepelansky?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Dean Smith?
Yes.
Jane Gary?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes. So, now we go to part two, which is... Special land use. Where's my special land use? This is the special land use piece. Do we need to, um, let's tackle that part next.
Special land use?
Yeah, let's do the special land.
Okay, oh, is this, do you want me to introduce it?
Yeah, introduce it.
Special land use SU zero-two-seventeen, Archdiocese of Detroit, for Our Lady of La Selette, 2,600 Harvard, north side of Harvard, between Kipling and Coolidge, tax ID number twenty-five-eighteen-four-three-one-zero-one-eight and zero-one-nine, the west eighty-four feet of Lot sixty-three and the east forty-two feet of Lot sixty-two, excluding the north ninety-three feet of the Denler Acres subdivision, is requesting special land use approval for a parking lot for a place of worship in the R-one-D district. So, this is the part to the north that is in the single-family residential district.
Right.
The parking lot.
And so, what we're going to do is swing that to, and that doesn't include that lot, the nursery lot or whatever, the tot lot?
No.
The tot lot is still there, it's just that...
That's a separate approval.
It's just that chunk of land that's adjacent to it.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Do you need any explanation from the applicant? We talked about it, sort of. Questions from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dean.
It might be helpful to give a...
Brief?
Brief overview of what you've got, including proposal for what's now not paved, to what would become paved, and just...
Difference.
People on TV will see this quite clearly, but...
All right. This is the area we're speaking to. Currently, we have the, a fully paved lot to the west side of the parish office building. What we're proposing to do is to create the horseshoe entry into the new church entrance, if you will, off of Harvard. And within that, we have three parking spaces and we have two barrier-free spaces. We're also proposing to add additional angled parking along Harvard to support that, the church entrance. And we also have a bike rack that we will be installing in the parish office building in this location, and additional barrier-free spaces here. The revised site plan will also include the entrance into the garage of the current parish office building.
On the west side of the building?
Mm-hmm.
The larger parking lot?
Correct.
How much pavement area will be increased or decreased or not changed by your proposal?
We would be adding two full rows of parking.
Which is about how many feet in depth? Well, not, not depth of pavement, but...
Forty.
Okay. So, forty more feet, linear feet, will be paved.
To the west, correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other members? Anything? Mr. Martin?
Yeah, according to your, to the site plan survey, you have about 168 feet on that north side of the east-west property line there? Right there? Yes.
Yep.
Now, I'm looking at a satellite plan, and it looks like about half of that 168 feet is currently paved, about, from the corner?
Yeah.
From the corner moving north, all the way to the west corner.
From this, to this lot line here?
I don't see a lot, is that a lot line?
Yeah. It is, right down there.
I'm just going off of a very, you know, this is from 15,000 miles up in the air, of course, but it looks like there's a line here, it looks like currently about half of this distance is paved. Now, it doesn't matter, it's forty, sixty, fifty, fifty, I'm just saying. So, right now, about half of it's paved, so you're adding about eighty, seventy or eighty feet of pavement, because you're coming all the way to this, oh, wait, that's the new, I don't see, again, we don't have the new, the new site plan.
No, it doesn't go all the way to the end here.
How far short is it? Is that what that dotted line is?
Yes.
Okay. So, you're still, you're still paving about sixty, seventy more feet, is the plan, give or take. I mean, I'm...
Okay.
Okay. I'm just trying to get my, get my dimensions straight off of the satellite plan. Okay. Is that, is that a pen on the north side of this area? There's a fenced pen with a dumpster and it looks like a, a trailer, motorhome trailer? Is that part of this property?
It is not.
Is that part of the neighborhood?
That's a residential lot to the north.
The dumpster is part of the rest?
Not the dumpster, but I believe the trailer.
There's a very shallow, ten or twelve feet, running east-west along here. It looks like a chain-linked fence all around it. There's a dumpster at the east end, and, and there's, there's what looks like a trailer.
That belongs to the parish.
So, that, that...
Not the, not the trailer. If I might introduce Deacon Darga?
Okay.
Just to help with that, that pen, that enclosed area, used to be a bike rack when the school was there. That's where there was storage for bicycles and it could be closed. Once we took the bike rack out, we put the trailer, which is used for the tree lot, and the dumpster we put in there, mostly because when the dumpster was outside, we were finding that folks were finding it a convenient place to, in fact, we had a fire at one time because of things being dumped.
Okay.
So, that is our property, and that's what the two things are in there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Where are you putting the trailer?
I don't think we determined that we were going to remove that section unless there's a good reason to do that.
Okay, it's not showing it here on the site plan unless the new site plan shows it, so that...
The site plan will show all of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, probably to remain, right?
Yes.
Okay. Where's their driveway? We're talking special land use right now, not site plan. Are we doing a co-congru...
No, we're doing a special land use.
I'm just trying to get the lay of land right now.
I understand that we make recommendation to council.
I understand.
Yeah.
I just have some other questions, those more to the site plan.
Go ahead.
Okay. Is there a plan for a masonry wall and to what extent? Because we are turning this, potentially turning this into parking as against residential. The chain-linked fence isn't going to be acceptable. And I know you have a fence around the playground right now, but at some point, you have backyards budding up to you on the west and also at the north. So, is there, and I don't see it on here, but is there, uh, plans to build a masonry wall, much like what's happening on the south?
No, we didn't discuss the masonry wall. What we did, we looked at continuing the line, the tree line from the property developer to the north, over and across and down to continue that vegetation, is to dissect that.
Okay. When it comes time to separate parking from single-family residential, we're probably going to require a masonry wall, or we will require a masonry wall. We don't require a masonry wall? Am I wrong?
When I looked at, well, it has to do with zoning and the fact that this is zoned single-family residential.
That's right.
And we did, we hold all of the churches and other places of worship that are in the single-family residential districts.
Right.
And there aren't walls. So, it would be consistent to not require a wall. They have proposed a decorative fence.
Yep. Okay. I misspoke then, I'm sorry.
Question?
Mr. Richardson.
I'm having a little trouble understanding where the entrance to the exist, the expanded parking lot is off of Harvard. Can you indicate that for me?
The curb cut here?
Pardon me?
The curb cut you're looking, you're asking about?
Yes.
Is it moving?
Okay.
I think that's the question.
Is it moving?
Is it changing?
Yes, the curb cut can shift over, so it lines up with the front, with the center row, and it'll be reduced in width.
Okay. And where does that in relation to the curb cut across the street for the Harvard Common project, do you know?
No, but we can certainly show that on the revised site plan.
Okay, because I would, I would not think it's desirable to have both curb cuts at the same spot on the road.
Actually, you probably want them at the same spot on the road.
I would prefer no offset, yeah.
You want them in the same, same center line.
Well, if that's the case, then I'll defer to the experts, but you need to be aware of that.
We'll show that on the revised site plan.
All in conflict.
Mr. Chair? So, I'm looking at the barrier-free spaces that you're providing and at the spaces that are on Harvard Road, and you'd said that the main entrance to the church will be the entrance now closest to the spaces on Harvard. I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to move some of those barrier-free spaces closer to the Harvard entrance as opposed to further away in the parking lot behind the church.
Where the angle parking is?
Yes.
We could do that.
Good catch.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Jane Gary?
A couple things. One, I just want to talk about bikes. I see two bike racks which would hold four bikes. It's a church. Just refresh my memory, is there bike parking already there? Is there other bike racks already on the site?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I'm just thinking, it's a church, it's in a neighborhood, a lot more than four bike spaces seems appropriate. I mean, obviously, we're not, we don't require it under the code, but it just seems like, given what I know about the way I and my friends travel around the city, you got a church, a lot more than four bikes might show up to a church, so, just, just throwing that out there.
It's hard to ride a bike in a dress and heels.
Never tried. To the decorative fence point that Mr. M. Smith was bringing up before, I guess my concern with that, and obviously, our code has, has a certain requirement, but my concern with that is if you're not putting some sort of solid surface there, you've got headlights, then it can become an issue going into neighboring yards. So, if I'm, if I'm not going to get a solid fence, some sort of shrub or something that's going to keep headlights from shining directly unimpeded into backyards is something that I would, I would look for.
Or looking at a line of landscape along that property line.
Right, yeah, a berm or something that keeps those headlights from just shining unimpeded into backyards.
They would have something at night.
Anything else? All right, I need to have a public hearing on this. So, I'll open the public hearing on the rezoning. Anyone who'd care to address this may step up to the microphone, state your name and residence of the city, please.
Hi, Wendy Zabramsky, three-three-four-zero, Gardiner Avenue, Berkeley. My question is, is, is there also shared parking with Harvard Commons for overflow in, that is counted in these spaces? Because I understand that's how he's selling his lots are with overflow at the church.
I'm not aware of that. Is anyone, are you, Ms. Vanson, are you aware of that?
He's not required to have any overflow, he has the two per unit.
Right.
I'm not aware of anything.
Other comments? We'll look into that. Yes, sir.
Kurtite thirty-five-twenty-five, Robina. Now, I thought we did see an email where there was a communication between Amy Vanson and somebody else mentioning that there was, she did know about a shared parking agreement between Harvard Commons, because she mentioned that that lot, the south side of Harvard, was going to be shared, shared parking for Harvard Commons.
Shared parking, right there.
It says right here, granted, this will provide additional 228 of shared parking with La Selette and Harvard Commons complex. And this is in an email, and this was from Amy Vanson, so, and I still haven't heard anybody address the fact that Harvard Commons is also going to be sharing that lot, so, that was one thing. Another thing is, I, you know, I understand this is the part of public, uh, public hearing for, for this agenda item, but as far as I was concerned, I think each agenda item has a chance for, for citizens' comments and questions, regardless of whether it's a public hearing or not. And I had a question regarding the last agenda item, and it was having to do with And I had a question regarding the last agenda item, and it was having to do with a fire lane, and I didn't understand if... I just remember reading about that fire lanes are expected to be 20 to 26 feet wide, and I saw where 24 feet wide was coming into the parking lot, and then it was 15 feet. Is that enough for a fire truck to get down in that area? And I didn't know if that was a concern or not.
They're going to... They have the comments from Public Safety regarding the, what the requirements for getting fire trucks and what have you, and they'll have that...
Right, I just worry, hopefully in the future, we can get a clarification if citizens are allowed to comment on each agenda item. Because I believe that is the case.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I can respond to the question about Harvard Commons, at least, from the Archdiocese of Detroit, now Lady of La Salle. There is no agreement. They have not approached us, and we have not entered into any... In fact, there's been no discussion on that. So that's the first time I've heard it, and our pastor's here as well, so, you know. So, you know, from our point of view, there's been nothing entered into, and it certainly would require not just our permission, but the permission of the Archbishop as well.
Exactly. Thank you.
Jim Cox, I live on Oxford 2701. Can I see what she was... You're talking about those three lots on west of the main church lot and everything? That's what they want to make into a parking lot? How much of that is zoned for residential, more story family or whatever?
What, we're rezoning?
We're not rezoning anything.
We're not rezoning anything.
It's zoned, single-family residential, what they're proposing to pave as parking.
Well, if it's going to be residential, okay, is this tied into a shared parking lot with the proposed project that they're proposing here tonight for the apartments and townhouses and whatever? Is that all going to be tied in?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah, the shared parking is part of that, the project.
What kind of barrier are you going to put up there for us three that live there to keep people from throwing their debris? When the school is open, I picked up stuff all the time, and I'm sure my neighbor here did too. I'm also having a problem with this, with the church and everything, with the shared parking lot, and coming in here and saying that if this is not approved, the church is going to close or going to shut down. You have a separation of power. You are a government entity. What happens to that church? There's no concern of the city or this commission. Okay? And I urge you to not pass this. I understand that, you know, there's a lot of parish people here tonight and everything, and I respect that. If they live in the city of Berkeley, fine. If they don't, I understand their ties to the church. But your tie is to the city of Berkeley, to our community, and to the people that live here, that pay taxes here. You have a separation of power. And I wish I would have read this article about Missouri and the church down there, and I think the state wanted that they do not own or owe the church a playground. But I'm not going to comment on that because I didn't read it.
That's not the issue here right now.
Well, the issue is, the issue will be here.
I'm not worried about what Missouri is doing right now. That's a issue, that's before the courts.
And that you have to worry about because that's the law of the land.
I agree with you there. I will formally agree with you.
All right, well, we have a separation of powers here, okay?
Yes.
All right.
All right.
Well, sir, if you don't mind, I would like for you to, you know, rescue yourself or whatever from the decisions that are being made, okay?
Rachel Pisantini, I live on Oxford in Berkeley. I just want to clarify what Kurt was trying to say to you guys. That information regarding the shared parking with Harvard Commons is in the public safety report to you. The Berkeley Public Safety in the report is under the impression that there is shared parking agreement with Harvard Commons. And just so you know, Mark Adler is selling those properties with the agreement to those tenants who are buying them, that they can use that lot. So I don't know that you know that, but that is what's happening. The other thing I want to address is the paved area that the church is asking for. You guys have already approved Harvard Commons. It's huge. It has a lot of cement and hardly any green space. And if you approve that parking lot by the priest's house, we might as well just pave all of Harvard. And all those people that live on Harvard and behind that on Columbia and Kipling, he might as well kiss their property goodbye because their houses are going to flood. Those people on Kipling and Harvard are already having problems in the backyard because of Harvard Commons. That needs to be taken into consideration. The residents that live here need to be listened to. It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon Auger, I live in the area of south Berkeley. I just wanted to comment, I understand that any development here is going to require a lot of parking, and parking is definitely going to be an impermeable surface. I would hope that the architect, the developer, and the planning commission would give a lot of attention to stormwater retention and the requirements that would be necessary in order to prevent issues with having older infrastructure with combined stormwater and sanitary sewer. So I just want to request that appropriate attention is paid to that issue. Thanks.
Our city engineers have to look at it, and it's part of this task of doing this project. So they will be, the city engineers, Hubble, Roth, and Clark, will be essentially doing a lot of the design and looking at it and making recommendations to the developer and to the church regarding those issues. Because there are state laws, there are federal laws, and there's local laws that all have to be dealing with retention of water, stormwater, and so all of that has to be addressed. Okay? Other comments?
My name is Jim Phillips. I've lived in Berkeley for about 37 years, 1936, Beverly. Currently, I'm also president of the Oakland Manners Homeowners Association. And I'm inclined to want to support Berkeley residents' needs wherever they are. But I don't get this thing about shared parking. I don't imagine that somebody is going to run a business from their condo or from their townhouse and people park. Seems to me the only time you'd ever use shared parking is if you have a party. And if you've got a party and you've got a whole bunch of people coming in cars, chances are you'll say, hey, go park in the church parking lot. And it doesn't hurt anybody. If we're talking about making it a shared ownership, maybe, but, you know, you can get a little bit silly about sharing things. And if all we're doing is finding a way for people who are living there, if there's a parking lot nearby, to say you can't use it makes no sense at all. So at least on that particular issue, I'm not about ready to support my neighbors who seem to have some problems with this business.
Thank you. Other comments? Hearing nobody coming forward, we'll close the public hearing. Now, what is the desire of the planning commission at this juncture? Do you want to review this one again before we send it to council? What do you want to...
As far as the site plan approval?
No, I think we need to see everything updated.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
So you want to postpone this?
Absolutely. I do. I'm of everybody else.
Agreed.
I do have a question, though, if I may. Amy, we've had a comment tonight about Harvard Commons affecting stormwater in neighbors' yards. Has DPW had any...
DPW hasn't shared with me if they've gotten any complaints, so I can follow up with them.
Could you ask for our next meeting, because this will probably come up again, could you ask for someone from the DPW to be here to answer these questions? Because we hear a lot of these things, and... We don't know. And, you know, much like Harvard's Commons, you know, these properties are all supposed to have engineered detention underground, and when I hear something like that, it's either happening or it isn't, I'd like a definitive answer from our DPW.
I will do that.
Thank you.
The other issue is, I think we need to look into this shared parking between Harvard Commons and the church that doesn't seem to exist.
Follow up with...
Follow up on that, please. Thank you. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to postpone this. One question. Have we given the Archdiocese some clear direction about the barrier that we expect between the parking lot? We talked about a wall, we talked about vegetation. We left that open. We'll get into that when we get, talk about the site plan next. Right. Right now, I'm looking at special use. We'll have to come back with...
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion to postpone.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second, you will?
Sure.
All right. Discussion on postponing the special land use.
I don't see the need to. Personally, I don't see the need to postpone the special land use. It's separate than the site plan review. I do realize that it is three projects, or, you know, three phases of the project, but the special land use, I don't think we need some of the details about the site plan development, which, you know, we'll get to next. I mean, personally, I think the special land use is, we can agree to it or not agree to it, and then they still have to pass the site plan review elements. And I feel like we have, you know, mixed the peas and mashed potatoes together.
We do have a little bit here.
And so I'm, I like my food not touching right now.
So what do you want to do? Have we got a motion on the table? Well, my two cents worth is that we should postpone it because it, these are interrelated topics. And technically, you're absolutely correct. Right. But it would behoove all of us, plus the citizens, to proceed with this in one whole step at a time. That's how I look at it.
And thank you. And I'm okay with it on that premise. I'm not okay with it because we don't have details of, you know, of a wall or vegetation.
Well, but don't you think...
Details. I know those are going to be needed for the site plan review, but like, the purpose of postponing this is to keep it, you know, elegant and consistent along the way, not because we don't have details unrelated to the fact that it's special use or not, in my opinion, so.
Okay, I guess I kind of disagree with that, too. Maybe the more guidance we can give this sooner, I think, the better the whole, it is for the entire project. That's my view, and I don't know what the consensus is on that, but... I have a motion, and it's been seconded.
Ready for a vote?
Call on it.
Murad?
Yes.
Kapalinski?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Dean Smith?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Martin Smith?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay, final piece of this is the site plan. We've already sort of started beating it up already, so here we go again.
So, and this will be the site plan just west of the church building?
Correct. Yep, it's that portion of the parking.
Okay.
We're speaking of this section right here, okay? I'd like to, just for the record, clarify the total amount of spaces in the, in both developments. The total amount of spaces is 418, and the actual number of spaces for the church is the 170, and the apartment parking is 248. We're speaking of this existing parking lot here. We're adding additional barrier-free, but we'll relocate some of those on the revised site plan over closer to the angled parking on Harvard. We will provide an area over here for the garage access. We'll relocate the existing aisle, okay, across from that of Harvard Commons as well, line it up with the existing aisle of the parking direction, implement some signage as necessary once we do see the report.
What do you want to do about the adjacent residential? You want a landscape? What do you, what's the desire of the planning? Ms. Buckler?
I think dense vegetation would be fine here. I appreciate Mr. Tengary's comments about headlights into the neighborhood, but I think those are limited times of the year, notwithstanding of the shared parking, but I don't see that being, you know, used as, like, on a daily basis per se versus a six-foot wall, which I think, I don't know, I think dense vegetation would probably work well. There's not enough nighttime events at the church. I don't foresee, you know, 50 cars being parked here in the evening, coming and going, addressing that. I would like to go back to the stormwater retention issue that was brought up, and I do think there's some real opportunity. I assume that the existing parking lot immediately to the west of the church offices is going to have to be completely dug up, because it looks kind of old if I walked it the other day, and I'm like, I'm thinking it's not just a topper situation. And so, you know, stormwater standards now versus whatever year what this was built in the 50s, or I'm not exactly sure the original construction, are more stringent, and there's real opportunity for the church to look at some rain gardens, maybe some permeable pavement, some other options that will further decrease stormwater impact into the infrastructure as well as ensure that it does not impact the neighbors' yards in any ways. I know there's some clay soils over in that area, half of Berkeley was built on a swamp, so God knows what the fill was used back then, and I deal with 130 acres of paved lot every day that it rains. I'm responsible for stormwater management, so I get the challenges of all of that. The, I think that you, there's some real opportunity with pulling up some of the pavement and the new green space and doing something innovative out here.
Yes.
And you can do it with at very reasonable costs nowadays, so I would encourage you to do that.
Thank you.
Amen, so to speak.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair. So in regards to screening, this lot actually is going to be considered as part of the shared parking with the apartments, so there will be a lot of traffic in and out at nighttime. So I'm concerned about that. I don't know if hedges or dense evergreen trees or shrubs are going to do enough, so... And I understand the challenge because even if we do the special land use, we're leaving it a single-family residential, allowing special use as a parking lot. So it kind of complicates the requirement for a wall. So I don't know, I don't know the best way around it, maybe even just like a privacy fence.
Or maybe a low wall with higher vegetation.
That could be, that could work, too.
I just think that's a six-foot wall.
But look at it, see if you can come up with something creative.
We'll do that.
That would be my preference.
Mr. Martin Smith?
You know, the plan we have, and I see you have it, too, refers to a decorative fence, ornamental fence, A, in the bottom left-hand corner.
Right.
And it looks like that goes all the way around.
Yep, right here.
We did take it, preordinance, the ornamental metal fence to this property line. We've been in communication with the developer to marry some of the detailing around the parking lot, and strongly looked at the vegetation as a better option.
Okay.
Other comments?
Lighting. Same thing as the south's property.
Yeah.
It gets dark in the winter, and... Can you flip to the second sheet again, please? I'm sorry. Well, the shared parking, that's part of, that's part of the next item.
We were looking at, yeah, just the wall packs along this area.
Yeah, you are, yeah.
But we can provide the cost of the pole lighting in the lot, you know.
I think it'd be nice if that whole thing was developed as a coherent lighting, lighting plan. And we have a lighting plan for the other project. I don't recall until we get to it how far it extends. But wall packs on the building don't really give you a lot of light out in the parking.
They do not. We do have poles on the existing lot here.
You do? Oh, okay.
I think there are two, are there two? I think there are two, are there two?
Yeah, there are.
I've got not many, frankly. I never had any porch.
It's hard to tell from 15,000 miles up.
I never sleep there.
So, okay.
Okay.
And it also, you know, obviously, we talked about stormwater management, all the same comments, pretty much, that we talked about on the South.
Yep.
We'd like to, but here, it's shared.
Yeah.
Should this all go, it's shared. So, both parties are going to have to agree on how they want to engineer this, how they want to light it, and all that other thing. So, that's something that'll have to be worked out.
Worked out.
Any comments from the public?
Kurt Heidt again, 3525 Robina. I was going to bring up, I believe that Berkeley First has a shared lot at 12 in Wakefield, and I think if you go by there, I believe that has a wall that's at the back of that where it abuts to the residential housing. So, I really think when it comes to screening, if it's going to be, you will find out, I'm really, the majority of the shared lot is going to be apartment parking, and it's going to be in and out. It's not going to be like, once a week. So, I really think that you should require there to be a, a wall if it's going to be for shared parking. And that's, we're not trying to say that somebody can't just park at a church. You're talking about 90, 99% or 95% of that lot will be apartment parking. That's not the occasional, we're having a party, so let's go park down at the church. That's why people are so concerned about that.
Why, why will that be?
Because they're entering an agreement to give away all their parking to an apartment place. I just wanted to clarify that. That's the difference.
Thank you.
Just point a clarification, I think the zoning of the Berkeley First lot is actually commercial zoning.
Yes, it is, and that is the difference, is the underlying zoning. Thank you, Mr. Tengary.
Anybody else? All right, what's the desire of the planning commission?
I'll do the one motion to postpone. Site plan was its name, SP 0717, to the July 25th meeting, 25th?
That's it?
Yeah, okay.
With the comments?
Well, yeah, with all the comments that we've.
Vance and O'Ford forward. Is there a second to that motion?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Shadle. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr.?
Just to further muck things up.
Let's do.
I, I would encourage the, the applicant to give some serious consideration to a masonry There is activity, or there would, there would be activity if the apartment complex is approved, and, you know, our job here is to, you know, try to manage, you know, balance interests. And I know if I was living next to, you know, an apartment complex, I would appreciate a wall that was at least high enough to block headlights.
Yeah.
Vegetation blocks noise, so some combination of the two might, might be a, a better solution than one or the other.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments?
I second Mr. Smith's comments because I remember back in my involvement with the remodel of the library some 20 years ago, the architect's plan was to, instead of put a wall, put a hedge at the back of that property, and the feedback from all the residents there across the street was, we'd rather have a wall, so.
Yeah, so a wall was put up? Okay.
All righty. Does the applicant have a response to that? You look like you.
They don't need a response now.
Well, she, she looks like she wants to respond.
Actually, we'll take everything that's been spoken of tonight into consideration, and with the further reports, address all in a revised site plan and get it to the city of Berkeley within a week.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Vanceon.
Murad?
Yes.
And Gary?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Martin Smith?
Yes.
Dean Smith?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Kapalinski?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Do you want to take a five-minute recess here and make a break? All right. Item number six.
Item number six is planned unit development, PUD 0117, Berkeley Coolidge LLC, 2219 Coolidge Highway, southwest corner of Coolidge and Oxford, tax ID 2518431015 through 016 and 017, and a portion of 022, lots 13 through 15, and 52 through 53 of the Denler Acres subdivision, is requesting planned unit development approval for a mixed residential development.
Okay, let me make one note here first. I have had some communication with the developer regarding parking, and also, we've had discussions about traffic studies, and I just want to put that clarification out, that I did have those conversations. The developer came to me in the absence of Ms. Vanceon for some information. So with that, I'll turn it over to the subject commission.
Good evening, Sherwin Barnett, and ladies and gentlemen of this commission. My name is Bennetteri Bello of Berkeley Coolidge LLC. In recognition of the tabling of the last three items on the agenda, we would still, even though we're coupled together in some fashion, we would still like to proceed forward and make our presentation and obtain your approval.
We're going to have a public hearing tonight on this.
We understand. We're here before you this evening for our public hearing of our PUD request, seeking your recommendation to the city council for approval of our site plan. At our last meeting on May 23rd, we went through a detailed review of our proposed project. We heard many constructive comments from the planning commission and residents, and as a result, we made significant changes to our plan to satisfy those concerns. Instead of reiterating our entire presentation, we'd like to focus tonight on what we heard and the changes we propose. At that time, you spoke, and we did listen. Here's what we heard and the changes we made. We heard concerns of the following: that the proposed 20-foot setback of the new construction apartment buildings may be too close to the western boundaries of the property and in close visual proximity to existing homes. Our proposed solution: the new construction apartment building setback will be 40 feet, as recommended by the commission, although the code only requires 20 feet, therein creating a greater distance from the western property boundaries. We have also set back the new construction apartment building further from Oxford Road, which was much further than that required under the multifamily zoning. Also, we have shielded the view with the eight townhouse condominiums on Oxford. And for screening, we're also planting 15 to 20-foot mature, high evergreen trees along the western property, blocking all views. We heard from you that the proposed new construction apartment building was too high, and that the roof deck, rooftop deck could result in excessive noise. Our proposed solution: at the suggestion of the planning commission, we have removed one story of apartments and the rooftop deck from the building, reducing both the height and the density, thereby eliminating potential noise issues and lessening the density in the western portion of the project by 22 units, and reducing overall the density of the project by seven units. We heard that there would be no ownership by residents in the project. Our proposed solution: we will offer the eight townhomes, units fronting Oxford, for sale. The remainder of the project will be at market rate rentals, providing for the city a much-needed housing component that it currently lacks. We heard that the townhouse, homes' front facades had small windows. Our proposed solution: we have enlarged the subject windows, and all windows will have consistent design with mullions. We will also be providing brick on all four sides of the first level, along with improved design features to the garage doors as well. We heard that the plan lacks efficient landscaping detail. Our proposed solution: we have incorporated into our submission a landscape designed by one of the state's most prominent landscape architects that presents the landscape features to be in excess of code requirements. Further, we are providing today the details for the landscape contained in the courtyard of the new construction. We heard from you that we are required to provide a loop water system to increase water flow, and also, there will be requirements to provide storm detention, adequate city and county requirements. Our proposed solutions: we and our civil engineers have met with the director of Public Works and their consultants, Hub, Roth &amp; Clark, and are working on a plan that will create a greater efficiency for the project in neighboring areas and satisfy all of the engineering concerns. As you know, prior to any final site plan approval, all plans must undergo a comprehensive review process by each regulating agencies prior to the issuance of any permits. We heard from you there may not be sufficient parking for the development on our shared parking with the church. Our proposed solution: we have gone through extensive examination of this matter by analyzing the number of units, the type of units, the number of bedrooms, visitors, shared units. Our finding scrutinized previous and current trends in providing adequate parking to ensure that the number of spaces will be convenient and sufficient for all residents, as well as those of the needs of the church. We are providing a ratio equivalent to not less than 1.8 units at all times, and in reality, on all days, not less than two spaces will be unit, per unit, be available for parking. We are exceeding the one and a half spaces per unit as suggested by our property management company, Village Green, which is one of the premier, most respected property management companies in the country, managing over 40,000 apartment units and being around for about 100 years. This recommendation of 1.5 units is also confirmed by recent studies from the Urban Land Institute, which is essentially the governing body for land usage in this country. And we have attached a letter and a study that we hope that you have reviewed, but it's also supported by the city planner in the PUD review report. We heard from you that increased traffic flow may become an issue to the neighboring streets. Our proposed solution: the campus development will add right turn only, no left turn signs onto the exits to, to Oxford, and left turn only, no right turn onto the exits to Harvard. We will construct an elevated curved left lane, left turn lane, and no right turn lane into the Harvard Egress, and an elevated curved right turn lane and no left turn lane onto the Oxford Egress. These elevated curb lanes will prevent drivers from making improper turns onto either residential, either residential street. As a restatement of facts, this property was originally built and used for many, many decades to accommodate over 1,000 students, visitors, and staff on a daily basis. Our proposed development will facilitate only approximately 15 to 20% of the former use. Based upon our extensive experience in analyzing and curing potential traffic issues in millions of square feet of other development projects we've been involved with, we firmly believe that most of the ingress and egress by the residents will more naturally flow to and from Coolidge Highway as its main access to and from the north, and to and from the south to I-696 or 11 Mile Road. We will also insert into our tenant lease agreements that no left turn will be tolerated onto Oxford Street, and no right turn will be tolerated onto Harvard Street. Should a tenant disobey these rules, they will be subject to a fine, and if repeated, may cause for a lease termination and a notice to vacate the premises. Also, because this development is for residential use and not commercial use, there is typically a trickle effect of traffic throughout the day, rather than a rush during normal peak hours of 8 to 9 o'clock in the morning, or 5 to 6 o'clock in the afternoon, thereby minimizing any heavy flow of vehicles onto the residential streets to the west. Also, Harvard and at Coolidge possesses a traffic signal that we would like to coordinate with the city to adjust the signals to allow a greater length of time to turn onto Coolidge Highway, and we're certainly open to other suggestions as well. But Coolidge Highway itself, as a commercial roadway, is intended to accommodate 35,000 cars per day, as recent traffic counts reflect the usage of only approximately 19,500, which speaks to that it still has a greater capacity yet to be uncovered, and we're not looking to get anywhere near that. However, should the planning commission or city council require a traffic impact study, we will certainly accommodate that request prior to city council's final approval. For a greater insight into our market analysis and resulting tenant mix, the array in types of units being offered with the varying size, amenities that's intended to create, and atmosphere that is tailored to meet the needs of each segment of the prospective, of the prospective residents. First, for our seniors and empty nesters, they can live in an environment close to their family and friends. The new construction building will offer the comfort of a parking area that will provide protection from inclement weather. The tenant can enter at a covered lobby to an elevator that takes them to their floor, whereby they will live on a single level, not have to climb stairs, be relieved of property maintenance or other related obligations out of a house. The activities that will be offered within the buildings will encourage the community spirit to have greater involvement with their neighbors and a sense of security by each helping each other and looking after one another. The young professionals and millennials will have an opportunity to live in a more peaceful environment than that of projects in other cities in the general area. Also, the proximity to the major roads and freeways make this location convenient to places of employment, while the workstations that will be constructing within the building will offer a live-work environment for this segment. Also, we anticipate a significant number of Beaumont Hospital employees as tenants who can finally live in a new state-of-the-art facility within bicycling distance of the hospital, as opposed to the antiquated apartments surrounding that area. Our property management company, again, Village Green, has a longstanding relationship with the hospital and expects to locate incoming physicians, nurses, and technicians, and believe that this development will outperform anything in the general area. We respectfully request that this planned commission recommend to the city council our approval for a project with or without contingencies. Thank you very much. We are available to answer any questions.
Is Bob North here? He was. He was supposed to be here. He was going to address some issues.
Okay. I'm sure he'll come back.
Here he is. Mr. North.
Mr. Barnett.
I know there are some issues, and that you were going to address some of these issues, and so I'd like you to start us off.
We received a notification of these plans from the, the planning department, from Amy Vanceon. I did a review of them, and I took it down the hall to one of my sergeants, and had him call in his squad. And those of us on the operational end of these types of things, the ones who respond to the needs of citizens and business people, took a look at this, and my officers wrote a report, two separate ones, one regarding 2600 Harvard, but the one I think that we're talking about now is 2219 Coolidge.
Yes.
I had occasion, after this report was written and shared with Mr. Terribello, to speak with Mr. Terribello, I indicated to him that because of past experiences and the fact that any issues that we don't solve now from a public safety standpoint are going to be dealt with with officers 10, 15, 20 years down the road. We don't like to have to do our work twice. Therefore, in this, my officers, and I explained to Mr. Terribello, who was very cooperative throughout our discussion, the fact that when I work with officers and go and burning buildings with them, and chase bad guys with them, and they write a report like this and say we would like to see a traffic impact study, then that is exactly what's going to happen as far as the Department of Public Safety is concerned. Now, of course, this is your arena, not mine, we can only make recommendations. However, what you have before you is based upon the fact that we had a relatively quick, obviously, we're doing other things besides trying to read this. We would be happy if the commission so chose through the planning department to look at this with further detail. Mr. Terribello has been most cooperative and agreed with the traffic impact study. How that should come about, or who would do that, it's not my purview. However, my officers have put some work into this. We're concerned about water availability in event of fire. We're concerned about parking and how that would impact the neighborhood. Our job is public safety, and to some extent, quality of life. And we take our work very seriously, and this is what we're recommending at this time. Mr. Terribello is on board with what we're recommending, and if you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to field them.
Would you explain, there's an issue in your report about the excess of fire equipment, and the way it's written, it sounds like we're talking about the building falling down.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, is that the piece about the building collapse zone?
Building collapse zone. Could you address that?
Oh, before he does, can I interrupt for just a second?
Yes.
Thank you. The report that was written by one of your sergeants was wonderful. I just was impressed to no end, and even more so that he had a few minutes, talked to me yesterday about it. The one thing with the collapse zones, just to set the context, I saw, wow, what is this? And he was very patient and explained that it has to do with the staging of fire equipment, not so much the separation of buildings, but how you stage fire equipment when a building is fully involved in fire. And if I even halfway understood him, it's now time for you to take over.
When we talk about collapse zones, we are talking about exactly what you're talking about. This is the National Fire Protection Act regarding placement of fire apparatus for fire ground firefighting. Okay, we know that if a building is so tall and if it's fully involved, it has a potential collapse zone of so far out and away from the building. This is one of those things, when I said we don't like to do our work twice, we consider these things because we look at these things from an operational standpoint. You know, now we like to see bushes and nice things, don't get us wrong. You know, we're not totally insensitive to those things, but our job is the hardware end of this. And that was a piece of education so that people could try and get an idea of what is it, what we have to look at on these things. You know, I explained to Mr. Terribello that whether or not development goes in is really not my purview. My purview is provide information, as is that of my officers, to help you provide information for an educated decision to be made. So that's where it's at. It's strictly a firefighting tactical standpoint to try and provide information of what it is we have to look at. Whether the building's two stories, 10 stories, or whatever it is, wherever it is, there's always going to be those issues, but that's a tactical consideration for us. Doesn't mean that a tall building's a problem.
Okay. Is that clear to everybody?
May I ask?
Yes.
Chief, is there a problem with getting your equipment into this development as planned today?
As planned today?
Yeah, as planned today.
As proposed right now.
Well, number one is we don't know if there's going to be any change in any hydrant locations. We won't know the size of the water mains. Okay, we do have considerations that, you got to remember, a fire truck is eight feet wide.
Eight feet wide.
Eight feet wide. Our ambulances, the box ones from our ambulance company, they're eight feet wide. Okay, there's different ramp angles or turning radius issues depending upon the size of the wheelbase. Okay, so can we get into everywhere, every time? No, nobody can throughout the country. When you're going to start development from scratch, do we want to make sure we have enough room to service properly in the event of an emergency? Yes, we do. We are concerned about that. And like I said, if you want, we'll go back, we'll put some guys on it, and we'll hammer it out really good. We have to give it some time though, it's hard to do it when you're answering calls. But yeah, we want to make certain we can maneuver. Now, can everything be built so we can maneuver all the time? No. Look at New York City. But we'd like to have a fair chance, given the opportunity, and I think that's what we're asking for, for the citizens and for ourselves.
Right. And it's for protecting the people.
Absolutely.
That's number one. Okay. Any other questions? Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just going to throw something. So Oxford Towers, it's been there, I don't know how many years now it was built before I moved into the community, but I'm thinking 70s, 60s, mid 70s?
Seventy-five.
Okay, thank you. So here we are nearly 50 years, or over 50, or nearly 50 years later or so. How has it changed for how you guys can, if there is a fire at that building?
Well, that presents a different set of challenges. At one time, the average age of that building was approximately 84 years old. That was a construction project where each of those apartments was set into place as an individual unit by crane. So fire travel would be restricted. Smoke travel, as in any building, is always an issue. Although that would be contained. We have had fires there, contained in one unit, we knocked them down, and if people would stay in their apartments like we told them to, my grandmother, God rest her soul, was one of the worst offenders. Whenever she heard the alarm, she wanted to look outside the door, and I caught her one night. But anyway, that's a different set of issues. Anything above the fifth floor, we're generally going to have to go in, use an elevator and fight it from the inside.
Okay. All right. Other questions for Mr. North? Is there anybody from the public who wants second questions from Mr. North?
If there's too many, I'm going to have to set appointments in the morning.
Yes, I know. Okay, I think.
How many times has the ladder truck actually hit Oxford Towers?
Oxford Towers, a working fire?
Yes, ever.
We've been up to ventilate, but we haven't had that issue, thank goodness.
Yes.
So I'm happy to report we don't have that type of experience there.
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Hi, Wendy Zabramsky, again on Gardner Avenue in Berkeley. My question is, is in your report here, it says collapse zone of 76.5 feet. So what does that mean, around the building?
Yes, what that, that's what we just addressed. That's a tactical, based upon the height of the building, if the building is X, the collapse zone is Y. And that's a tactical consideration for us. You know, that's a firefighting tactical, where do we put our trucks? How do we make an initiated attack? How do we maintain? If we have to move, where's the best place to move to? The building's fully involved, best place would be on the corner.
Sure.
That's the best shot you got. So that's what it means. Building is X, collapse zone is Y, strictly a firefighting tactical consideration.
Can I respond to a couple of things from Chief North, please?
And just to add to that, and everything that Chief North has said is certainly has tremendous merit. Would concern any citizen about health and safety, and again, relative to if we can start with the building itself, it'll be buildings themselves, they will be fully sprinkled. That's number one. As far as the water supply, we addressed that within the presentation itself. We know that we need to add additional pressure. We have met with the Department of Public Works, and that was one of the items on our agenda. And with that in mind, we've already looked at a few areas where we will be putting in an easement to have enlarged piping. We recognize that we will need proper pressure. We recognize we'll need 360-degree access around these buildings, and we think we've provided for them. If we could possibly just show in a circular motion to enter off of, we have 360, if we start off first, yes, this is, Joe, what you just passed up to the west, this is a crash gate. So this driveway that accesses onto Oxford Road will only be used for the condominiums. However, if there's ever any kind of an emergency, there's a crash gate right there that will allow for fire trucks, ambulances, whatever's necessary to get through. And we believe at no time will there be a problem with accessing everything. As far as the fire hydrants and so on, again, not an issue when we get to the civil engineering part of this, of our planning. We will certainly provide whatever fire hydrants are necessary, again, health and safety first and foremost.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got another question for Officer North.
Your name, please?
Mark Earl, 2359 Henley Avenue. As far as are, are there any cooperative agreements between Berkeley Public Safety and the surrounding communities? And if our ladder truck was used in other communities and a incident broke out in Berkeley, how would we be serviced? What would the priority be? And are those other communities who may or may not be in this cooperative, do they have any of the same equipment that we have? Let's say Southfield has a lot of high-rise buildings, do they have equipment that could come and help us if the need ever arise at Oxford Towers or any other new construction area?
How you doing, Mark? Haven't talked to you in a while.
It's been a little bit. It's good to see you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Well, Mark's given me several questions. I don't know if this is the purview for that discussion. We do have mutual aid agreements, we do have automatic call agreements with several cities in the area. We're a member of what's called MABUS, the Mutual Aid Box Alarm System. We can pull a lot of equipment, a lot of people from a lot of places. We go, they come, I mean, it all works out. And, you know, we just hope that we never have a situation where we have to make a priority decision because that means everybody's in a lot of trouble. And obviously, the priority is the home front comes first. So I don't know what else to tell you, but if you want to talk about that further, I'd be happy to talk. Give me a call, come see me tomorrow.
You answer my question.
Coffee black and hot, we'll be good.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah. I'll bring him some dogs. How's it going? This is Kurt Height, 3525 Opina. I had a question regarding, did you guys address the concerns of, it seems like the majority of the churchgoers are going to be crossing Harvard to get to the church, and with as much traffic as that's going to create, because they're going to be crossing at the same time people are coming into park as well as possible tenants of the apartments in the wintertime when there's snow, ice, they're going to have to cross Harvard, have you guys addressed that from a safety standpoint for crossing the road? You know, a lot more pedestrian traffic and a lot more vehicular traffic, and what kind of concerns do you have about that?
I'm not sure if the question's related more to Public Works assaulting or public safety. I suppose if the weather's that bad, it'd be better coming to church, coming from church than going to church if something bad happens. But the, you know, the thing is that the traffic lights, which I heard addressed earlier in the evening, we are part of an overall system in Oakland County of traffic control. We don't have any localized control on the cycle time of a traffic signal. 12 mile road, for example, runs, I think it's from just this side of Telegraph Road all the way to Woodward, is one section of the overall traffic control grid. It's a, it's a, it's a very, very intricate dance, and the little cameras that you see that just record movement, that all ties into the traffic flow. So as far as traffic flow goes, you know, that's something that'd be coordinated, definitely not in my department. That's in Oakland County, our Public Works, everybody gets in on that one. As far as safety issues go, the Public Works guys are great. None of the streets are plowed, they're salted, everything's done within eight hours after a major snowfall. I don't know how they do it with the people that they do, but they're great. And as far as, you know, education in the community, I mean, if they're adults and going to church, I don't know how much more we can tell them about traffic safety, except maybe every now and then remind somebody that, hey, maybe you better take your time. You know, we can't always guard against everything. There is some personal responsibility involved in some of this stuff, and we'll do the best we can to educate or guide. Ultimately, when it comes across in the street, it's up to an individual, especially if they're an adult, you know, to make the proper choices. And so that's where we're at with that.
Thank you.
Excuse me, if I might add, there is an intention to install crosswalks across Harvard and for two intentions. One, certainly for the, for the movement of pedestrians, but as well as trying to slow, one of the things we've been hearing about is speeding cars along Harvard, along Oxford. We think that that might be a useful tool as well to help slow down traffic. Speed bumps are not something that we're encouraged by the chief, and so we're going to look for every alternative we can to help.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Paul Jordan, I live on Tyler. I do have one question for the chief. We've got two schools right in that immediate area. Do you have any concerns with the increased traffic and the student population? Because I've been by that high school when those kids are cutting across. I was just wondering if that's something that you folks have factored into this? Thank you.
We're always concerned about the safety of our children. All of us are pretty much parents over on my side of the parking lot over there. We do have crossing guards. We always make certain we have enough crossing guards, especially for the elementary school and middle school children. High schoolers, once again, we're getting into an adult stage, and sometimes, you know, we tell them how to cross, where to cross. It helps if mom and dad helps along with that, too. And we provide the opportunity to be safe. That's all we really can do sometimes. And are we concerned? Well, of course. How much something down on Harvard and Oxford would affect Catalpa, for example, is yet to be seen. We have no way of knowing that. That's one of the reasons we asked for a traffic impact study, so we can gain some additional information. But safety, we're always concerned about that, is what we do.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then what I'm going to do at this point, I'm going to run around the room here and the Planning Commission for questions for Mr., for our developer tonight and our architect. Mr. Martin Smith, I'll start with you.
Can you start on the other side?
All right, Mr. Dean Smith.
Oh, that's not fair.
He's got the most questions. He just wants them to be eliminated.
Yeah, he wants to get them together. I've got just kind of a series of apparently, or what'll appear to be random, questions. Some have to do with, we talk about market rents, and I've seen repeatedly comments that $1,200 a month is ridiculously high. So I polled people I know that are landlords, and I find that here in the city of Berkeley, single-family homes are renting for 1,500 bucks and up. So I learned a lot. I, you know, my whole idea, I last paid rent was $270 a month, and I thought that was robbery. For older people, which I'm now one, I think, all right, so it's time to sell the house and move into an apartment. I sell the house, I clear 150 grand, that's like 15 years of rent, which is probably longer than I would live. So when I, when I hear issues of the rent being too high, somebody told me that the development over by St. Bead's, or where St. Bead's used to be, they're renting starting at 1,200 or 1,300 bucks. So I've learned a ton just by trying to research, you know, what are rents? And this area's more expensive. In terms of vehicles, you know, one of the issues that, overarching issue is cars, where do you put them? How do you do it? Any thoughts on limiting the number of vehicles that tenants can have? You know, I'm familiar with several apartment complexes that require people to have stickers.
Yes.
And guests will park in a certain area, and it makes it easy to enforce. But one of the things that, you know, going forward, important to me and important to people in the community is that we were certain that one of your renters does not own four cars, three motorcycles and an RV.
Yes.
So there's, there needs to be a plan somehow to limit the number of vehicles that a tenant would park on site. When we get to the overall, look, you're going to see power lines along Oxford Road, which will have to be relocated and perhaps buried. The building height, I've wandered around the neighborhood repeatedly, and the sightlines, I don't think I could see a four-story building from anywhere along Kipling, maybe the corner of Kipling and Oxford. But there's, there were things in your presentation that would be highlighted.
Yes.
One odd thing was noise. You know, right now, we have an open parking lot, and noise carries across quite nicely when a building is there. That may have an effect, and that's scientific and certainly not anything I'm good at, but there's a lot of things that you've done to change the proposal. And they're all movement in the right direction.
Thank you.
But, you know, the traffic study would be important, even something about, does Harvard Road need to be widened a little bit to put in a center-left turn lane? You know, I don't know how much traffic there is, that's what a traffic study does.
That's correct.
But there's just, there's a lot of open questions, but what you've got tonight versus what we saw a month ago is dramatically improved. I thank you for your effort.
And thank you, because your comments and critique last month was, through the chair, if I might speak to Commissioner Smith, your statements were certainly, yours and others in the commission, were very, very helpful. We didn't walk here and here trying to sell something, we wanted feedback, and from the feedback, we tried to learn. And from what we've learned, and we took this extremely seriously, we have tried to improve our product in every aspect. When you talk about the noise levels, we want to be When you talk about the noise levels, we want to be good neighbors. That's just as simple as it was. When we recognize that there may be some noise that may overflow into areas, we want to stop it. We don't want to cause any harm, we want a quiet enjoyment for everybody that's up and down the block, across the street, wherever they may live. That's their right, that's everybody's right. As far as parking, numbers of cars, if I might go back to part of our original presentation, when we started this process, first and foremost, in recognizing that there had been a serious issue with a business on Woodward that has caused probably extreme problems for the city, we didn't want to go anywhere near that, and we started off with point one. How many parking spaces do we have available on this property? And from that, instead of going in an opposite direction, how many units can we squeeze into the site? And do we have parking that's going to be convenient and available for our residents? We work the opposite. We work from, how many parking spaces do we have available? How many can we fairly, conveniently, and properly service our residents, as well as certainly the church? Part of our agreement is an exclusive, it's called a restrictive easement agreement, which allows us to have cross-parking, cross-access, cross utility easements, other elements that help us to work together and make this into the campus that we're trying to form here. Within that, we have gone through extensive conversations and counts with the church itself, and again, working backwards. How many parking spaces do you utilize? How many parking spaces utilize and needed on a daily basis, on a Sunday, on a holiday, and other events? And we, from that, worked to ensure that the church has adequate parking. And as I said, this restrictive easement agreement is an agreement that goes with the land. This is in perpetuity. We will always have not less than 1.8 parking spaces per unit. And again, what is now recognized by Urban Land Institute, our property management company, not to belabor the points, 1.5 is now what is recommended for apartments. And so, we know that we are exceeding that, and even so much as that virtually all times we'll have more than 2.0, which is what the, your multifamily ordinance calls for. In terms of the view, again, we spent extensive periods of time, a lot of different drawings showing the shadowing of how we may or may not impact any of the neighbors. And with that in mind, we have, we feel very, very, very comfortable that basically, number one, the tree lines themselves that exist today are higher than our buildings will be. So, we know that we're blending in, but adding to that are the maturest trees that we plan to, we'd like to add to the property and its perimeter, especially on the west side, and block any views.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Mr. Hand, Gary?
Yes. A few things. One is, I didn't see it labeled on there, maybe I just missed it, but I'm looking for the widths of the drive lanes down the western side of the property.
I believe we have, is that 30, Joe?
I think it's 24 clear.
24 clear.
Okay, so 24 clear from the end of the spaces to the...
And bear in mind, there are parking, there's parking adjacent to it as well, so if a major vehicle, such as a fire truck, had to get through again, they take no prisoners.
Right.
And that's to widen it even.
Okay, I was just wondering if it was wider than 24, but if it's 24, then it's 24. So, about the parking, I'm, obviously, it's important to have enough parking here, but I'm looking at the front six parking spaces with respect to Oxford. And really, they're pretty much front yard parking spaces. They extend in front of the townhomes, and...
No, there are no parking spaces in front, what we...
Yeah, right there.
Right there, yep.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, they extend beyond, they extend beyond the front wall of those townhomes. And in particular, it's the space on the end in each of those rows that's got me concerned, in part because it's so far out, but also, in part because it's directly adjacent to the sidewalk. And I feel like that's really not an appropriate place for a parking space. It really, first of all, when you turn into this driveway, if you're coming from the west, you're going to pretty much just be suiciding into that parking space. And the other thing that I've got going through my mind on this, especially this one on the west, is, you know, you've got headlights shining directly across the front yard of the townhomes. Obviously, the townhomes aren't built yet, and someone moving in would be moving in with the understanding that those parking spaces are there. But, it just doesn't seem ideal to me. Those front three, to me, just feel like they're in the front yard.
Yeah, not to minimize anything that you're saying, I think this is something we can try to work with. We can certainly put in, we can at minimum, look at compact car parking over there. It's primarily, and again, if I might, if...
You might just start the circulation of around the condominiums.
Condominiums themselves, those are two-car garages that are attached in the rear. So, there is no parking out in front. The side parking is for visitors. We can, we can take in consideration what you're doing, try to minimize that. Again, compact cars may be the simplest way to approach it. If we need to drop off a parking space, because there's, we're blocking any kind of access or an easier access, we can certainly look at that as well.
Sure, because I don't want doors swinging onto the sidewalk for one thing.
No, no, no.
But...
Yeah, we do have a landscape area, we do have a sidewalk.
It also seems to me that one of the, you know, recurring issues that we've got is lack of green space, so taking out that space on the end and doing something landscape with it...
We do have landscape.
Might help mitigate that issue.
Understood, but we do have, if you're not recognizing right there, that's all landscape, and we will have ultimately full landscape drawings that'll reflect everything in there. But, we'll be installing, basically, number one, we're adding 20% more pervious service to the property. Right now, as everybody knows, this has been an impervious property for decades and decades, and we are going with, we are adding a lot more landscaping. Your concerns about headlights and it penetrating into people's homes. We had a town hall meeting last week with the church and wanted to hear from people and any of their concerns, and there were some residents from Kipling and elsewhere that mentioned things and said, I don't have, some of them said, we don't have a problem with your project, it's great, but, you know, the lighting may come through, now that it has been a parking lot that hasn't been fully utilized in all these years, now it's going to be more utilized, and we have some concerns about the light coming into our homes. It's a reasonable statement. And we will, and we pledged to do something about it then, and we continue to pledge to do something about it now. We will add whatever is necessary. We think that, you know, again, adding mature trees, adding other plantings, we can buffer anything that's necessary, and we look forward to working on that topic.
Sure.
Joe, do you have any suggestions as well?
I think we have the parking to give and most parking points right there. Stay real with me. It's an oversight on my part, I got to tell you.
First two, gone.
First two are these, but the three is nicely configured with the building and the new building. I mean, it really does conserve that front yard approach to Oxford. And I think we have the numbers to give easily, within our understanding of what we need. So, with that, I'm going to tell you, we won't do that.
Okay.
We were, and we had, and just to make a statement here, these are items that we had become aware of between the last hearing and today, and it was suggested, don't give us any new drawings, let's work with what we have.
Sure, okay. I get the west driveway going out now. There wasn't an ingress egress there before, now there is. Is that just for circulation purposes? Was there a public safety element there?
It's the firefighting for the campus.
Okay, all right. So, there's a public safety reason that's there.
There's a public safety reason, and still to give an easy access for the townhomes without having to circulate through the entire project. But, other, that crash gate will stay closed, it will not cause for any kind of ingress or egress to the rest of the complex.
The townhouses are owned.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. I'm going to throw this one out there, just to get you thinking about it, particularly with the cohorts that you're talking about as prospective tenants. Electric vehicle spaces is something you're probably going to want to think about.
I don't know, we have.
We have.
Okay.
I would love to, but this whole road parking under electrically...
We're already considering all of that.
Oh, sure, okay, all right.
And there's one other thing we're considering right now, we don't know the answers to it yet, but we may go with the sign, with assignments of parking spaces into your questions about how are we going to regulate how many vehicles people have, that's one of them. But, we intend to be very, very, very strict about this. We know, again, we have a neighbor in the church, and we have an agreement with them.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Buckler, you're on.
I'm short. Back to the parking, I have a suggestion or an idea you could consider is perhaps on a one-bedroom apartment, it comes with one parking space, and they pay extra for the second vehicle to avoid Mr. Smith's scenario of RV, three motorcycles, and four cars. Or, you know, or whatever the case may be, but there's something where it runs with the rent, and people think twice about, you know, and then there's like a guest limit or something. I mean, I know that's hard to enforce without assigned parking and passes, but I can recall, you know, having been a renter a million years ago, and I frankly think these are, I'm glad Mr. Smith has modernized his knowledge of what rents are, because, believe me, that you should go a little bit outside of Berkeley and see what rents are. These are, these are going to be a bargain for, most of these are bigger than my house, these apartments.
It's something we can certainly, again, we plan to consider all this as we continue to work through the details of this project.
Fifteen years ago, I got a closet in Boston for 1,200 a month, so...
There you go, there you go. That was my only comment right now.
Appreciate it.
Just a few quick things. I do appreciate your efforts in addressing our concerns in the way that you have, but I will say, when public safety has a concern, I have a concern. So, you know, certainly, we need to, I hear that loud and clear, so certainly sounds like you're willing to address those concerns. I also heard from Chief North that he needed some additional time to review things again, to go through things a little bit more thoroughly, so I want to make that point and reiterate that. A couple of small questions. Rooftop amenities, I saw some conflicting information as to whether those are going to exist or not going to exist, or going to move to the...
It's going to exist in the former school building.
In what potential area?
Right here.
There is...
Right here, it's lower than the gym.
Okay.
It's lower than the fourth story on your, so it's completely separated, segregated, will not be seen, will not be seen anywhere but the internal function of our own campus.
That's a good question.
All right. And just a couple other notes, certainly, you know, with the PUD agreement, I mean, the city attorney's going to have some comments, I'm sure, concerning that. And then, the photometrics, I think at some point, we need to address to make sure we understand the photometrics and...
Yes, and additionally, we will be coordinating that further with the church in harmony, yes.
Our part of the department wants to get six new standards that match the standards that are on our portion of the lot, so it's existed.
Get to the microphone, Joe.
I'm sorry.
Get to the microphone, people can't hear you.
We have submitted the photometric and the light standards that match ours. There's six, there's six in your package, and the photometrics clearly show the lumens and the available lighting. It's safe, it's adequate, it's not overlit, it's not underlit, it's nicely done, project does a great job, and they match the standards that are in our portion of the lot also. So, it's a campus feel, it's consistent, it's the same stuff.
Aye, okay.
Thanks.
And these will not lead children to other problems.
Question about the photometrics, actually, if I can jump in. Do you mind?
Please.
Okay. I see values assigned within the new apartment structure. Are those on the ground within the garage, or are those in the, there's the courtyard area? What am I looking at there?
That's downlights from the roof, from the structure of the podium itself. That's going to be a very dark cave, if you will, so we have to very carefully light it, so it's safe and not overlit. The worst thing you could do is overlight it, and it looks horrible, if you've ever seen that. Belmont had it, for a while, they turned it down, they cut the lumens out. We have very carefully studied it, you'll see the lighting levels, it's safe, adequate, and it doesn't glow. Just softly lit, safely.
Okay, so I am looking at the garage there, all right, thank you.
Shadle, you got something? Mr. Mirror?
I have a few things. Again, I kind of, mirror was Ms. Shadle said about public safety, and that they will need time to review everything. Do you have a timeline as to when you think you can have this traffic impact study completed?
It, we can order up a traffic, I mean, very simply, if there is a recommendation, and we'd like to suggest that the recommendation we made contingent upon an acceptable traffic impact study being conducted and an acceptable plan being put in place, that we would like to continue on as soon as possible on this, and still not be held up by whether it's from the delays with the church, and still keep marching on. We can get a traffic impact study, but it done fairly quickly, but there are different measures of traffic impact studies that we would have to ask simply about. I mean, how far do we need to go up and down Coolidge, through, up and down Harvard? There are some aspects of how we need, how we believe we need to control traffic and how we can help with it as well. And that's going to, we'll, we would probably suggest that we would like to speak with Hubbell Roth and Clark as your city engineers to see if they want to make a recommendation of a company that they work with and trust closely, because this is going to be, this is something, and just to throw it out there, this is somebody that we'll be hiring, and we don't want to give the impression of any conflict of interest here.
I think they do have a traffic study.
They do have, and we have no problem, if the city has no problem in allowing us to use Hubbell Roth and Clark, we have, we would love to engage them.
As fans, and I think we've used them in the past.
We have, I think the applicant's referring to a conflict of interest if they're paying somebody to do the traffic study.
All right, the other question I have is the circle drive off of Coolidge.
Yes.
How much do you think that's really going to be used?
Well, it'll be used as a drop-off point.
No, no, in front of the building.
Right in front. This'll be used primarily as a drop-off point and a pickup point. There's an elevator that is now going to be installed immediately in there. Joe, could you elaborate on that?
Sure.
Get up to the mic, Joe.
We have an aging population. Let's stay right there. This was looked at in so many ways to house so many people. And there's no doubt in my mind at some point, this is going to be an emergency exit, there's going to be vehicles in there from public safety, helping people get safely to the hospital, in and out. In climate, we have a covered drop-off point there, moving in, moving out. We have a new, we have a new elevator, a giant elevator being put in right there. We have a new, we have a new elevator replacing the one that's in the back over in this corner. So, there's... So there's two elevators, but this is the primary big elevator for those emergency and big moves. That, this covered drop-off, I think it's going to be used a lot, to tell you the truth. If I was gonna pick somebody up, where would you pick them up? Where'd you ask somebody to meet you?
We have seating.
And there's a seating area there, it's made, it's made for that event, to keep the traffic out of the internal functioning of the unnecessary traffic out of the inside of the lot. And will this building be converted then to mostly senior? Hmm, pretty good chance, look at the population numbers, and we're gonna need it even more then.
Okay, I'm just concerned about those two curb cuts on Coolidge, that's all, so.
And those will be low volume, we know that. One of the other things that we didn't mention before that perhaps we should, is one of the items that we will be looking at further, is the main drive, Joe, if you could point to that, please. The main drive, we plan to put in a boulevard at that point. One of the other things we will consider as well, is possibly making a no-left turn out of it.
It's no-left turn now.
It's a no-left turn now, but that, as a private entity, makes it a little unenforceable with something we may feel that because there's a traffic light at Harvard, we would like to encourage the traffic to flow onto the residential streets out, not, again, west, but out under Coolidge, we want to make that as the primary address, and we don't want any, any conflict in there.
So, the other question I have is on the existing school building, with the plan to add another floor to it, actually, it's two floors, but they're self-contained, two-story, any thought to making those condominiums?
There certainly has been discussion, mostly from the commission, residents, and so on. In a nutshell, condominiumizing existing buildings, new construction, is extraordinarily difficult financing-wise. It's not like building a townhouse, a condominium, where you can build a setting and see how it goes, and then build more units from there. When we start this building, and because it's multi-level, we've got no choice in the matter, and that is, makes it a very, very risky business, not just for us, but for a lender. And there really, at this time, can't be any kind of a consideration for it, it's not to say it couldn't happen in the future, sometimes what some people do is they, you have to start out as an apartment complex, or carpet building, and as time goes on, and you have then secured your project, it is stabilized, then you can start asking tenants if they would like to buy in, or as you can start accepting deposits, there are things that can be done, but it takes years to first stabilize, and you also have other problems in there too, and that is, when you're financing these projects, there's what's called a prepayment penalty. So if we were to start selling off units, and our lender was to have said, well, you can't do that, because now you're hurting our investment, there really become a lot of complications, it's just not that simple, if I might answer it that simply.
Alright, that's all I have for now.
Ms. Kapalovski.
So I had a chance to review the video from the last meeting, and it did look like you addressed a lot of the concerns that the planning commission noted at that meeting, and that was good to hear. I also appreciated the inclusion of the ULI and ITE information on parking. I took the opportunity to look at some other area community parking standards for multiple family, and a lot of them were at one and a half spaces per unit, or even one space per unit, so that did seem to be in line with a lot of area ordinances. But I did have a question on the photometric plan. So I'm looking particularly adjacent to the single-family residential on the west property line, nearest the new apartment building, and some of those lighting levels look quite high, foot candle at 7.7, for example, kind of dead center of that shorter portion of the property line. I'm wondering if you can include the lighting levels as they would leach over onto the adjacent property, so I'd like to see them a foot or two over the property line, just to make sure that that particular house isn't going to have any light leaching over.
Certainly.
That's not a problem.
Not a problem.
But additionally, just in case you didn't notice, those are mature plantings, mature trees that we're putting in, they're gonna be 15 to 20 feet tall.
And is that as high as they're going to get?
No.
Oh, no, 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 that's, we're installing them, already mature, they will continue to grow, they will continue to fill in.
A question on that, so if we have these trees that you're planting, mature trees, I assume you're allowing some spacing then for additional room to grow, so they don't die in a couple years. So, what sort of opacity would, would that particular resident expect to see in a year or two? What would be, how much is gonna bleed through, how closely are they going to be spaced?
These will be at 10 feet.
Okay, and that'll, that will still allow enough room to grow, so they won't die off in the future.
Yes, yes, I mean, this is a detail that we will work out further, but for right now, what we're doing is trying to reflect that we will ensure that our neighbor is shielded, and so on.
Okay.
You probably were Jim Scott, right, the Lionsgate architect?
Uh huh.
Okay, he'll be at the next meeting, we can talk about those specifics, he's got a lifetime of experience, we've hired the best, he can answer that, let him, next time. Obviously, we're coming back, we hope, thank you.
And one additional, just not really a question, but a comment, the parking analysis that's included on sheet AS1, it doesn't seem to match up with the parking numbers that the church was talking about, so if you guys can just work together to make sure everything's consistent.
Yeah, we, yes, we, the architect for the church had made some recent changes, and added some more parking, it didn't, and again, we were asked not to submit any new drawings, and talk about it this evening, but we do have an understanding of exactly the number of units of serious spaces that we have, in entirety in the campus, how many the church will need, how many we are sharing, how many are exclusive to them, all the way down the line.
It would be, and this is just a suggestion, but wonderful if we could have a sheet, kind of like the church was showing, with different areas shaded, this, this portion is shared.
We do, this is it.
This is now the previous.
Okay.
Okay, so everything, everything in green is parking that we will be utilizing, the north portion is exclusive to us, the green, this yellow area, Joe, to the north of Harvard, is exclusive to the church, everything in yellow to the south of Harvard is exclusive to the church, everything in green to the west is shared.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all?
Okay.
Mr. Richardson?
I'll start off with a two or three questions, it might seem a little off the wall, but I'd appreciate substantive answers. First of all, from an engineering perspective, could the roof of the gym support loft apartments?
No, next, no.
It cannot.
Let me explain, that's a clear span structure.
Okay.
You're sitting next to a really wise architect, I think he'll support this statement. When we engineer those structures, we engineer them to probably within 10% of their capacity is ultimate strength design. So, what that means is, is that when the snow comes, and when the winds come, and when the building is subjected to all the forces that nature has, we don't have a lot of capacity left in that, maybe 30%, 33% by code. And so, when you start adding areas like living areas on top of that building, there is not the capacity. Why we can do it inside the gym, the gymnasium was designed for an assembly use, the assembly use is over double of what residential use does, so we can divide that safe foundation and floor level by two, and put another level of residential there, and not even come close to the residual foundation capacity. The roof doesn't have that capacity, and it would be, it's a very vibrant structure spanning across that entire building, I'm sure it moves, I'm sure you can watch it move in the wind, so no.
Okay.
Did you get all that?
More or less.
I might suggest, if we can elaborate though, on why we can use.
Mike?
But if I could allow, ask Joe to explain further why we can use the existing school, I think it'll clear it out, clear it up even further.
Well, I think I know where you're going with that, but go ahead, I don't want to stop you from answering.
I don't need to talk anymore, and I need to, when you want something, I'll answer it.
Alright. Next question, has any consideration ever been given, and throughout this project, to moving the apartment building over to the school and attaching it to the school, to the other school?
Yes, we thought about that, about, you know, basically trying to carry it out as almost called an L shape, and it was very inefficient, it cut down on units, it cut down on parking, it costs a tremendous amount of money to, and this isn't your concern, but it does affect, impact the project itself, but to attach these buildings become a different issue, and there are standards relative to construction of attaching a form, in fact, let me just ask.
Not only code, not only structure, but the texture and community, think about having a wall, having, extending that wall down to afford this piece of property, and afford those apartments, it would be literally a canyon along Oxford, it wouldn't have the texture that we're providing with the condominiums now, we're providing a residential texture there, that I think is gonna be very warm, and it's gonna continue to the texture that's on that street now. If we put a wall there, I think it would become a barracks, it would just become a very unpleasant place, that's my opinion. Structurally, from a co-perspective, it's very difficult to do.
Okay. The reason I'm asking these questions is that, I've thought a lot about the, you know, the three lots that you're building, these townhouses, and this apartment building on, and these are platted lots of the same size as the other lots along the street, where you have single-family residents, and, you know, you're putting 72 units onto these three lots, and they're, just, I might be off by a percent or two or something, but I think you're covering that, those three zoned multi-family lots with 54% building area, and under normal zoning, you'll only be allowed 35. Now, the, the point I'm driving at is that you're asking for a planned unit development, and the purpose of a planned unit development is for the community to realize benefits that they would not get through conventional zoning. It's not primarily for the developer to realize benefits, it's for the community to obtain benefits. And, you know, I'm seeing a, I'm seeing a development here that's very intense, and that's right next to single-family. And there's, I know you got some landscaping in here now, I'll take a look at it, but, you know, there's really not a whole lot of open space, there's probably less open space than there would be under conventional zoning, the way I see it. So, I'm asking you to tell me, what community benefits are we realizing if we give you a planned unit development, giving these circumstances, where we don't have as much open space as we might otherwise have, and we have very, you know, an intense use of that parcel? In your own words, just tell me what you think those benefits are.
Well, we've already qualified for the benefits, I mean, we, this is part of why we're here today. Our first meeting, our first hearing, was to meet the qualifications of the PUD, which we have done, and that was approved, so from that perspective.
Not yet.
No, I'm sorry, we did.
The city council ultimately approves this.
Your recommend, your recommendation was that we approve, that we had met the guidelines, but some things I'd like to correct, if I may, is you're pointing to you believe it to be 54%. From, from the report itself, 1.2 acres of floor acre, of floor area has equaled 39% of lot coverage, not 54%.
I'm counting the townhouses as well.
Alright, yeah, that's counted as well, yeah.
Okay.
It's, I mean, we are zoned multi-family, we're asking for a PUD, the benefits to the community, I could, actually, out of the seven, we qualified for, we did qualify, and were recommended for it, in our opinion, we qualified for six out of the seven.
Well, I don't dispute that you might bring such benefits, but I don't see what the PUD has to do with those benefits. I mean, you're talking about increased tax benefits, you're talking about increased foot traffic, you could get that other ways.
Perhaps we could get that other ways, but would this project be built is, becomes the issue. We're here, we're working here, and it's a PUD, we are trying to work with you, and we are trying to make every effort we can to make a project that is to the benefit of the community, to the benefit of every person that lives in the city, there may be some that oppose it, and people, some people don't like any change, but to do it without the cooperation of this commission would be something that would not allow for the project to happen, and if we start cutting back further upon units, if we have to start cutting back further on amenities, we can't offer the same level of a project that we believe this city requires.
Okay, well, the point I'm trying to make is, you have intense use, and this is related to the parking issue, and it's also very much related to the traffic issue, and I think that, you know, I personally couldn't recommend that this be sent to council without the results of that traffic study. We're talking about maybe 200 cars, and adding 200 cars to this neighborhood, and you're going to use what amount to, you know, pretty much ordinary residential side streets, instead of the thoroughfare for the bulk of that traffic, so I think it does raise legitimate questions. You've already indicated to the chief that you're going to study that and report, and I appreciate that. Just a couple of other comments, maybe more on the positive side, I think you've resolved, in my mind, the building height issue. If the project goes ahead as is, I don't think that height is going to intrude on neighbor, neighboring quality of life. I personally think that the parking for this, with the shared parking, will be adequate. And I have, like my fellow commissioner, have, have looked into parking requirements across the nation, I came across a study done for the city of Lone Tree, Colorado, which is a suburb of Denver, about 14,000 people, similar in size to Berkeley, and the advantage of that study was that they looked at a lot of different jurisdictions, 18 jurisdictions in Colorado and in Southern California, some very car-dependent communities, and by and large, we're talking one-car requirements for studio, one and a half for one-bedroom, and on average, you're only offering 12 two-bedroom apartments, I think that this is going to be adequate. You know, we're moving into a different age transportation-wise, and in five or 10 years, we may find that this is excess of parking. So, so I do believe, and just one other comment, for the community's sake, I don't understand the opposition, well, I do understand the opposition to shared parking in a way, because we've had some problems with it here in Berkeley, but as a, as a planning principle, I think we're on very good ground encouraging shared parking. The last thing I want to see is this community paved over, parking lots are just outdoor storage areas, they're inefficient when they're not fully utilized, which mostly they're not. They're inefficient when they're not fully utilized, which mostly they're not. We don't gain anything by paving over the community with excess parking lots. We generate other problems that way. At the same time, we have to assure that parking is adequate. So I do feel it will be adequate. I think that the traffic, though, is a, it's a related issue, but it's different. On the one hand, you're talking about what do you do with a car when you're not operating it? On the other hand, you're talking about operating cars. And, you know, both are issues, but, and I think we need the information about operating on these streets. So many of my concerns have been met by the changes that you've made. I think my real concern is the intensity of development that you're putting on to that parcel, which is off the major thoroughfare into the neighborhood. I'm still a little uncomfortable with it. I think I'd be more comfortable if, instead of apartment building, you had a couple more rows of townhouses in there or something. Because then you'd ease, you'd ease the, you'd ease into a, you know, from a multifamily into a single-family. You don't sound like you're willing to consider that, but I'm just sharing with you my concerns.
I understand and we respect your concerns. And again, that's not to minimize what you're saying, diminish it in any way. But if you look at your master zoning, this is what the long-term plan was, for this area to have a greater density of population. And typically, there's only a few ways to accomplish that, and that's vertical.
With all due respect, we did look at a bunch of different ways to put in condos. If we just rack them up, we can get about 30 to 40 in there. What are you looking at? The back end of somebody else's garage. You have no views. You have no humanity. This gives a city humanity. And when you're inside, when you're inside this apartment building, you know where you're at. You have that perspective. But when you have the pretense of a sea of condos, it's a worse environment by far. I can show you that graphically.
I just want to emphasize another element relative to traffic. I understand the concern that you have, that others have about it. We truly, truly are very, very well-qualified to handle these issues. We've done it with, as I said before, with millions of square feet of properties, millions of square feet. And in all cases, I know for myself, my partners, I believe, are extremely conscientious as well. I always go back to a community a year later and ask, well, you had this concern about this, about this, about this. How did it work out? Because we don't want to make any promises we can't keep. Traffic is a major issue that we do not want to have here. We do not want parking overflowing into the residential areas. We are ensuring for ourselves, and it's more important probably for us than it may be for you, that we are going to self-contain. And just those parking, the curved exit drives will stop, unless it's a Hummer maybe. It's going to stop anybody from bouncing over it. We're going to do every, and that's just the beginning. Any ideas that we can come up with jointly through a traffic impact study with the help of public safety? We're going to try to employ all that.
Just so you know, I, the way I came up with the 54% was, I put your apartment building at 28, 420. And the, each, each townhouse at 440, 4,040, for 880 total, for a total of 37,000 some odd square feet out of a, the three lots are like over 69,000 square feet. So that's how I came up with that. But I'm not engineering this site, so I'm not going to vouch for those figures. I'm just saying it's intensive. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to commend you. You've come a long way. You have taken into account a lot of the comments that we talked to. I think it was two months ago now, wasn't it? Back in May? No, April.
April.
I have a problem with books. Contrary to what some of our planning commission, and a lot of things have been covered that I wanted to say, but contrary, I looked at about 15 ordinances in our local area. And frankly, for parking, the vast majority of them want two spaces per unit. Now, you know, Birmingham, Canton, Clausen, Clinton Township, Farmington, Ferndale, Franklin, Hazel Park, Keegle Harbor, Madison Heights, Oak Park, Royal Oak, Troy, Wyandotte, and of course Berkeley. Now, these aren't all the same kind of communities that we are. But the vast, there was one of them that was less than two spaces, Ferndale. Several, well, the ones of these 15. Southfield also requires one and a half. That's, but that's a huge city, so I didn't include that. So, okay, two, we include Southfield. Several split at 1.5 for a small, you know, one-bedroom, a two for a two. More than half of them were two spaces, and several were two or greater, depending on one-bedroom or you get into two-bedrooms. So frankly, when I see, and all due respect, I know you, thousands of units, but when I see studios, one space, lofts, which are really a one-bedroom, 1.25, one-bedrooms 1.5, and two-bedrooms, two, I don't think that's enough. I really don't. And that's my gut feeling doing projects. And I look at the local ordinances, right or wrong, but this is what they are. I know there's all kinds of studies taking into account mass transit and all that stuff that we're expected, or that we have been expecting to do for 50 years. But I just don't see it. Now, that being said, if we were to take the studios and one-bedrooms, say 1.5 per, two-bedrooms, two, if you do the math, without land banking property, you still come pretty darn close.
We exceed it. If you do a perfect job.
So, but I want you to look at your numbers. I am not, like I said, I'm just personally, and I don't know how the rest of us feel, that parking didn't really even come up until the end of the row here. But I'm not convinced that's enough. And I think that's the worst thing that we could do is to underpark this property. Traffic patterns, you're going to do a traffic study. You know that already, so there's no reason to discuss that anymore in this, in this late hour. Like I said, commend what you did. No one's talked about aesthetics yet. I like what you did with the loft units on top of the building. And I think when we talked two months ago, we talked about converting the third-floor units into lofts. You went even further. That's great. However, I don't like the radiuses. I think that's, that's not a good look for the city of Berkeley. They're huge, oversized.
I'm sorry, which radius?
The radius is on the roof. I just, the main entry...
The eyebrows?
Not the eyebrow, the overall roof is just a curved.
Curved, curved.
And again, we haven't gotten into aesthetics yet, and maybe we're even too premature on that. But I'd really like you to take another look at that on the, on the school building, because it just, it, I don't, it just, to me, it's just not right. And, you know, I'd be open to what other, other folks here feel.
No, we're open, we're open to that. Again...
I know, that's your first shot. I understand.
Well, it was a first shot, but, you know, one of, one of the aspects of it was snow load on it. And this is the way, and this is one of the ways that we felt we could, we could handle it. And there was also certainly a height aspect that we were trying to minimize as much as possible as well. We want to retain the integrity, the history, historic aspects of this building as much as we can. But we do need to bring it up to new standards. We do need to have to make a tremendous amount of changes for ADA and so on and so forth. And...
I understand all that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the giant radius. Just, I just don't see it. Okay, I'm, or I do see it.
You can look at it.
And I'm not sure I like it, but that's me. And again, we're not necessarily talking about...
Well, we can look at other, at other ways of handling it and discuss it. We're not, we're not, you know, I think you've, I hope you found that we aren't closed-minded to any of the suggestions.
No, I commended you to start with, and you've come a long way. And likewise, on the front elevation of the new apartment building, that, that, that gable thing, you know, it, it looms even larger with your four-story building than it did with your fifth story. And it just seems a bit too much. There's a ton of glass there. And I know you have rooms behind it, meeting rooms, and so on and so forth. But that's just something to consider.
Commissioner Smith, if I, mind if I jump in?
Absolutely not.
Any thought given to mirroring the curved roof over the gable?
Pardon?
The gable on the back building, mirror the curved roof on the...
I was just going to say, I don't like the curved roof.
I don't like the curved roof.
But that doesn't mean it's not the answer. I just, just my thoughts, like I said, they've come a huge way, a long way. There's issues, and we've all expressed some. But I'm just delving into something nobody's talked about yet. So I want to see what you, what you think you can do with that.
I do want to reinforce one thing, though, and that's...
Yes, sir.
Relative to the parking. Again, as I said before, we are at 1.8. Our ratio is 1.8. And in actuality, in all, in almost every event, and we really can't think of any, we will be above 2.0. And that, and again, we have to be more concerned about this, honestly, than, and not, not to say the city doesn't have an interest in this. We don't want to repeat problems that have happened elsewhere in the city. We don't want to see it happen. We don't want, we have flat-out said, and I, and we know that, you know, by ordinance, if you don't have, if the city doesn't provide a structure within 500 feet, you can park on the streets. It's not what we're even thinking about. Okay? So we want this encapsulated. We want enough parking for not just our residents, for guests, for visitors, and so on and so forth. And certainly to make sure that the church is always handled.
Well, let me ask you a question about that. You say 1.8 and then 2.0.
Yes.
You have a finite number of spaces that are shared with the church. The church has a finite number of spaces of their own. You will find that number of spaces of your own. Explain to me how you can have a different ratio. Sometimes it's 1.8, sometimes it's 2.0. Am I missing something?
Yeah, because the church doesn't always use any maximum amount. Just, that's about as simple as it is. So we are always going to be at minimum, 1.8, always at minimum. But in most events, we're at 2.0.
Sunday morning.
And more. We can really calculate it up, but we'll just keep it to a simplified version.
I understand the concept.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm wondering if Deacon Dan might want to add something to that.
I think the only other concern we had is the one day of the year, or maybe two, but especially Christmas Eve is, of course, we get the most people of any time. The easiest solution for us, both to make sure that we don't run into problems, but also serve our parishers, is just to add another mass, which is what a number of our neighboring parishes would do. So right now, we have a Christmas Eve, 4 o'clock. We have a 10 o'clock. The 4 o'clock's the big one. You know, to do a four and a six is not a problem for us. I mean, there's some logistics, but, you know, I think in fact it might serve our families better and it takes, you know, that potential load down. Easter is not such an issue, you know, in our counts from this past year, but it would be possible to do the same thing, to do, you know, add one more on that day if we were convinced that there might be a danger of people not having a place to park.
Do, I used to go to your parish when I lived in Harvard. We're up in a different area. We, sorry, we go to Shrine now.
Good apology.
But we can walk there. That's, that's the only reason. There used to be, I don't know if there was an agreement, because this is 30-something years ago. We were new to the, new to Berkeley. We used to park in the, across the street from Coolidge, in that, in that parking lot now, in that parking lot there. It's overflow parking, especially on those certain days. Is there some kind of a agreement?
No.
For that? Okay.
No, there isn't. Granted, a few people, a few people use it, but we don't, we don't have any agreement.
Yeah, thank you.
And if I might, if I might ask or add to that as well, we had, what we do have is in our agreement with the church, is we are giving them a stipend that in the event, should they ever need to have to go off-site, if ever, they would be compensated for it. So in that case, there are public lots that aren't going to be used on those holidays, for instance. Now, the parking lot across the street with Beaumont, Beaumont Occupational Therapy, that's a, that's not an own facility. It's not something that we could enter into long-term agreement with and subsequently. We want something, as I said before, in perpetuity. We want to make sure that this problem isn't just something we're handling today. It's handled for many, many years to come. But for, to simplify what Deacon Dan has, has mentioned, if the church, if the parish splits their, their masses, if that becomes the case, we have zero problem at any day, any time of any day, throughout the year and for all the years to come.
When you come back, I don't know about the other commissioners. I might like to see some of that, how that changes the numbers on here. Adding a mass, you know, there's certainly, you know, does that make a big difference? And I'd kind of like to see that.
That 170 is where we, that's kind of where we got that number. We did a count on Christmas Eve, which is by far our biggest mass of the year.
Understand.
And that's about what we had. It actually was the 4 o'clock.
Oh, children's mass?
Oh, yeah. 10 o'clock, not so much. Christmas Day is relatively light. But, you know, I think we would much rather add a mass and make sure, especially if we have this density, than worry about 20 people trying to find a place.
Well, however you two parties want to work that out, I mean, because, like I said, I don't think all of us are convinced about the parking ratios. And if that can massage the numbers a little bit, that would help.
Sure.
Okay? Just...
But we don't want to take our people off-site if we can do that at all.
I don't think that's a, I don't think...
We don't want to do that. So lest somebody think we're going to be shuttling people around...
They'll be going to the shrine.
That's not our plan.
No, I'm sorry.
Parking at shrine isn't that much better.
Yeah, parking at shrine, the parking at shrine's pretty bad, too, on those days.
Are there any questions that I can answer?
No. I've heard, I've pretty much heard everything that I've, we've talked about the parking. We've talked about...
Thank you. We stand ready to answer anything else.
So what I'm going to do now, Ms. Fanson, is I'm going to open a public hearing. What I would like to do is, in the public hearing, I'd like you to make your comments short. If you, if somebody's already made the same comment, we don't need to hear it two or three times. So, and let's respect one another. So with that, I'm going to open a public hearing. Who's first?
Hello, Eric Wheeler, Ground Zero. It's, you know, kind of too bad for us that that presentation went on so long. I was trying to keep up with notes, and there are so many points to be rebutted. And so we lose focus. You've all heard the saying about the duck.
About the what?
If it looks like a duck.
The duck. Oh, the duck.
Yeah. If it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, hits a duck. And the duck in this case is that, the basic issue is that they're trying to overbuild on this site. It's too much for that parcel. And no matter how many ways they keep trying to shape it, it's still a duck. I don't see this plan as being any different from the previous plan. I said, okay, well, we've reduced it seven units, which I think is just insignificant. But they've shaved off a floor here, they've increased the floor there. Essentially, you know, it's going to create all of the same problems. One thing that I wanted to mention... If you try to limit, you know, say, you know, one parking space for a studio apartment, then you're getting into limiting lifestyles, and I don't think you can do that. I mean, I don't know what people are going to do in their places, but, you know, you may have two residents in a studio apartment. You may have two in a one-bedroom. And so therefore, I think that parking is going to be inadequate. On a very personal note, they talked about the photometrics, about the light levels. And while they might be able to control the, you know, the task lighting for the building, I don't know if they can regulate the light coming from the units. And I guarantee you, I'll be able to see that. My bedroom faces that direction. And they can put in trees that are 15 feet tall, 10, 15 feet tall, but that building is going to be taller than those trees. So can you mandate that people close their blinds and only use 40-watt bulbs? Again, you can't do that. So I'm going to try to remember all of the points that I wanted to make. I don't want to take up too much time. See, I think that the issue there is really about the school. And that's where all of this effort ought to be focused. Not, I don't want to see anything built in that lot, because I think it's all disproportionate. You know, if you add, I think the original plan called for 47 units in that school, and that's a good influx of people onto that block in that area, I think that's a significant increase, that you'd be doing well to get, you know, at minimum, 47 residents in the neighborhood. Trying to triple or quadruple that really puts a strain on all of us. Just this afternoon, I was trying to cross Coolidge to take a look at the Oxford Towers, which I think is a good example of how a campus should be designed. You know, it's a much larger building, but they have lots more green space. You know, they have outside seating areas and all of that. And there's nothing wrong with having an excess of green. Things are moving in that direction as people start to plan, you know, these types of developments. So less parking lot, more trees equals good. The other thing about trying to cross Coolidge is that, this was not at a peak period. It was about 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon, and I had trouble getting across Coolidge just with that amount of traffic. You add this, and, you know, hey, I'm a big, healthy, strapping guy, but it becomes rather intimidating trying to cross there. So what will you do? Will you install a crosswalk and a traffic light there? Or the other option is to slow traffic. And I don't think people are going to tolerate 25 miles an hour through there like it's a school zone, or 20 miles an hour through there in order to let people cross. So I could go on. I want to go on, but I'll let other people speak. But I think these are all things that are very serious issues, things that you should take into consideration. Some of you made very good points in your reservations about this. And I hope that you will hold to those in terms of considering not letting this go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Earl, 2359 Henry Avenue. I have been a resident 27-plus years of this city. And I, as my neighbor has said he was Ground Zero, I think I could give you a pretty good perspective on Ground Zero, or the edge of Ground Zero, being that I am in between Rogers Elementary and the high school. And of all the concerns that we've been brought here about traffic, in my 27-plus years, the biggest challenge of where I live is the schools. And it's nine months of the year, it's twice a day, for 15 minutes at the most, maybe a half hour on the inclement weather days. Not that big of a challenge. I've become accustomed to it. I can get out. We have lights at Harvard. I think you can get out on the street. I don't think Oxford is going to be a big detriment, because everybody who's been a resident for any amount of time knows that it's basically going to run into community field. And so will Harvard, but Harvard has a light. So I think we will adapt. I think the developers, if they can meet their agreement with the church and work together, I don't see why some type of development can't go forward. Ultimately, the residents and the city will benefit from the perpetual tax base that it will bring as infrastructure fails or gets old. I understand the safety concerns with it being a high-rise. Oxford Towers is in my backyard, and I can see the lights on the higher stories, even through the trees. It's not a big deal. It is in my backyard. Harvard House Apartment is in my backyard. I think there was one time in 27 years, the wall at Lazenby Field had a little graffiti on it. It is important for us to create a diverse housing stock, and it can't all be giant homes. And my venture into this duplex may spark something else on the Greenfield District, but I'm not opposed to having this, or some form of it, being developed. I think if we just turn a negative eye to it and don't allow it, it will, that school will sit there vacant. That's my biggest fear. And it won't benefit the church. It will not benefit the residents. And it will sit for a while. We're not going to get someone who's going to be committed to spend their money and invest in this community if we just keep saying no, no, no to everything. I think there are some things that may need to be worked out a little more, but I think it is, it's a good thing for the city, all in all.
Thank you.
I think that's good. It's been a long night.
Hi, Wendy Zabramski, 3340 Gardner Avenue, Berkeley. My concern is, this gentleman is quite a salesman. I have listened three times to him speak to you, and he reiterates and reiterates and reiterates, and taken most of the evening away from the public comment. And you're asking us to shorten our public comment to accommodate what we've heard. He's a heck of a salesman. Mr. Richardson asked him directly, what community benefit is there? And he said, he's already, like, you guys have already passed that test. However, the flow chart is the citizens of Berkeley, and the city council makes the decision. So I would like to hear from him, short and sweet, what community benefits this gets.
Jim Cox, Oxford, second house from Ground Zero. I have a question for everyone in this room tonight. I don't know where you live, or what street you live on, or anything, but how would you like to wake up to that every morning, 24/7? Go to bed every night with that 24/7, with the extra noise, with all the snow and everything else? And he's never answered that question yet, and I've talked to him twice. I've worked here 35 years, and I know these streets, I know these peoples. No matter what kind of survey or study you do, you can limit how many signs, no left, no rights, whatever. When people want to go somewheres, they're going to go. They're going to take their chances. I know. I watched them. You can say, okay, we got them contained inside there, we can keep them from going down Oxford and Harvard. But what are you going to do when they come home? Where are you going to put them? How are you going to put them coming down Coolidge, making a left at Harvard? That's one light. And you're talking 140-something other cars, or if you got 200 or whatever? Where are they going to go? They're going to come down Love Mile to Kipling, come up Kipling, they're going to come east on Oxford. Or they're going to go east on Harvard. Or they're going to come down Cotapa.
Right there.
Into the neighborhood. That whole area over here is going to be inundated with nothing but cars. At all hours of the night, when you've got apartment people working, different hours. I've put up with them lights in the back of that church for 34 years. I can't sit out there at night on my back deck without them lights shining in my, the noise, the parties, the parking. You have overflow parking with the apartments, people coming in with their friends, relatives, and everybody. No matter how you cut it, you're not going to have enough parking. And when that happens, and somebody from the church calls, says, I can't get in, what's going to happen? You're going to call the public safety. And how are they going to go apartment to apartment? Say, you got to move your car, when it's a shared parking. You know? I'm for developing that area, but not for that apartments. You want to put a little condo or cul-de-sac in there, put houses in there, fine. But think about it. All of that traffic coming home, it's all going to come this way. You can't stop it. You can't make no left, no right at every sign, every street. We tried to put a stop sign at nearly every corner. It didn't work. I started here in '68, and I know what I'm talking about. I've been here for 35 years on them streets. And, you know, it just, I hope this is not a done deal. So think about it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm just like... I'm Pat Maslowski, live at 1829 Kipling. So he's taking it from the police force aspect, and I would just like to address it from a citizen aspect. You know, Jim, you know how they cut through Kipling. People come, and this is just your average citizen, you know, we're not talking about our, you know, extra citizens that will be coming here, but I can't tell you how they speed down Kipling to get to Harvard, because they're cutting through the light. And residents here may not live on Kipling and may not know that, but that's what they do. And we have a lot of new families that live on that street, and there are kids. And those families don't realize the cut-through of what happens on that street. And so our, my biggest concern is the 200 extra cars that he evaluated and the traffic study. The traffic study may be fine, but you need to do part of the measurement for what all the shortcuts are to get to the apartments, okay? That's my biggest. And I just wanted to follow up with you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Because you know.
I know.
You know.
Fernum McTague, 13740 Haynesville. My family built this. I know this building is more than sound. It will be able to withstand all that. Please go through with it. Please improve it. We need more people for our parish.
Thank you.
I hadn't planned to talk. Sue Bailey, 1690 Columbia. My husband was born in Berkeley, and it's his desire to die in Berkeley. And we looked long and hard for a home in Berkeley where we could age in place. I'm a gerontologist, so I understand that concept of aging in place. It's very hard in Berkeley to find a condo. It's very hard in Berkeley to find a home that has a washer and dryer, not in the basement, okay? So it's really hard for us as seniors to think about aging in Berkeley. Having a development like this that offers other opportunities is great to me. My husband could die in Berkeley. And I think that that's important. I think every community, and I have to say to you, I really appreciate the time you take with this, because I have sat in your shoes in another community. And to have a vital community, you have to have a varied, diverse population. You have to have singles, you have to have young people, you have to have empty nesters, you have to have seniors, and you have to provide for those people. Oxford Park Tower is there, full of seniors. Do you know what the rent is there? $900. Have you seen an apartment there?
Tiny.
They're small, they're outdated, the elevators don't work often. Not my choice for aging in place. This would be my choice for aging in place. I walk this community a lot. There's a lot of lights on Coolidge, there's a lot of lights on 12 Mile. You can cross the street. You have a lot of opportunities to do that safely. If you're choosing to cross Coolidge not at a light, then you understand what you're doing, if you're an adult. Children, they may not. I love the idea of shared parking, because in the '70s, when we had a lot of subdivision development, strip mall development, we had huge expanses of parking lots, which we know now sit empty. And so shared parking is a great idea. And I think that they have really worked hard to provide for that. So I have to say, with your due diligence and the cooperation of the church and the developer, I think this is a great project for Berkeley. And I know that's not a popular stance, but thank you.
Thank you.
Joshua Hunter, I'm a resident, Thomas. Mr. Chairman, I know that there's seven standards in the PUD ordinance that need to be considered before it's adopted. And looking through them, it looks like this development fails nearly all of them. One of the first is the material benefit to the ultimate users of the project and to the community, where such benefit would otherwise be unfeasible or unlikely to be achieved without application of the PUD regulations. And Commissioner Richardson touched on this. And to me, I think the normal codes protect the neighborhood very well, so if this was a conventional rezoning, I don't think there'd be much issue. But the, I mean, I think it would be detrimental to the, to that entire block. It's a high-rise, 50-foot apartment in the middle of a residential street.
Excuse me, it's not a high-rise anymore.
It's at 50 feet? Okay, so it's a 50-foot building.
Forty-something.
Okay.
It's not meet-high-rise.
Okay, understood. The, so I would like to understand where else in the nearby community, in other communities, where we see developments like this at work. I think that would be helpful. And we've heard the public safety issues, those are part of the standards that need to be considered. And also, another...
Thank you.
Joshua Hunter, I'm resident Thomas. Mr. Chairman, I know that there's seven standards in the PUD ordinance that need to be considered before it's adopted. And looking through them, it looks like this development fails nearly all of them. One of the first is the material benefit to the ultimate users of the project and to the community, where such benefit would otherwise be unfeasible or unlikely to be achieved without application of the PUD regulations. And Commissioner Richardson touched on this. And to me, I think the normal codes protect the neighborhood very well, so if this was a conventional rezoning, I don't think there'd be much issue. But the... I mean, I think it would be detrimental to that entire block. It's a high-rise, 50-foot apartment in the middle of a residential street.
Excuse me, it's not a high-rise anymore.
It's at 50 feet? Okay, so it's a 50-foot building.
Forty-something.
Okay.
It's not meet-high-rise.
Okay, understood. The...
Tired of it.
So I would like to understand where else in the nearby community, in other communities where we see developments like this at work. I think that would be helpful. And we've heard the public safety issues, those are part of the standards that need to be considered. And also, another one was the... that the proposed development should not result in unreasonable negative economic impact upon the surrounding properties. And I can't imagine how having this large of a building fronting a residential street wouldn't impact the property values of the surrounding communities. I know even store owners along Coolidge, I've heard concerns that they're over-parking, and they're worried about this intensive use. And finally, it was regarding the master plan. It says that the proposed model should be consistent with the goals and policies of the master plan. And from what I read in the master plan, it's called that multifamily structure should complement the adjacent single-family units. We've talked about over the past year over missing middle housing, that's between single-family housing and mid-rise apartments, and this is on the complete opposite end of the spectrum. It's this large apartment fronting Oxford that's the crux of the problem.
Well, the apartment is not fronting Oxford. The townhouses are fronting Oxford. The building actually sits back about 125 feet, if I'm correct, somewhere.
It's an Oxford.
Top of property.
Is it an Oxford address?
Kind of weird.
I don't think we've established what the address is.
It's got this, it's got Oxford fronting.
It's got Ford.
It's not fronting Oxford. It's the townhouses.
Fodder's me.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So it's facing the direction of Oxford. It's not facing Coolidge. So the master plan calls for neighborhood scale of mixed-use structures along the major thoroughfares, low-rise loft apartments, townhouses, and condos to complement and transition to the single-family neighborhoods. And I think that's what we need to see. And this development is the complete opposite of that direction, and so I think that's because it's a detriment to the neighborhood. So I would like to see this, I'd like to hear a motion to reject it, and I think it should start from the beginning. Perhaps the school can't be saved, but I think it's, I don't think it's a historic building. I think I question the benefits that were mentioned at the pre-application hearing, so I think it should be rejected tonight. Thank you.
So you feel that it's okay to tear down the building and throw it in a dumpster and put it in a recycling somewhere?
I mean, if that's the most valuable use for the property, that's, I mean, I don't... It's the same age as all other, most buildings in the city, I think. It's not a historic building. I believe there's only...
But you don't believe it's savable? You just assume and see it wiped off the face of the earth and thrown in a landfill?
I mean, that would be fine if it's...
If that's fine with you?
Right, I mean...
Okay, that's all I want.
Right, I think it's, I think if more valuable construction that's valuable to the community can be made, that's what should be done, and I think it would have more public benefits.
Thank you.
How's it going, Kurt Hite, Robina? As Josh was talking about, you know, last year we went through a big thing with the foreign-based code and the 2015 amendment. When we were finally finished, we went through the board, and every one of you looked at it and agreed that, you know what, the wording was actually pretty vague on that 2015 amendment. And every single one of you... Now, you can argue whether or not our city code calls three stories or higher a high-rise or not, but every single one of you said that regardless of how vague that 2015 amendment was, regardless of what it was going to allow, that you guys don't feel that you would have allowed an apartment in the middle of the block of a residential street. If you pull up the picture for this street, for the apartment, and you look where the westernmost line is, and you look at how much room is left on the block going one way, and how much room is to Coolidge, that apartment sits right on the middle of the block. So regardless of whether you want to consider it a high-rise, a mid-rise, or just a regular apartment, by your own words, you all said that we had nothing to worry about because you would never vote to put an apartment... And we didn't discuss about how far it sat from the street, but you would never put an apartment in the middle of a residential block. It faces more residential homes on Oxford that face south towards the building than what are left on the remainder of the block. There's only four that face north. There are six or seven houses that face south towards it, okay? So I just wanted to clarify that. Now, part of the issue with trying to make arguments or discussions with this plan is that despite the fact that we were told in March and April, when it was first previewed and when it was presented to the planning commission, we were told then that, and this goes back to the ground zero's comment of Mr. Ground Zero, sorry, that when it's a duck, when it looks like a duck or cracks like a duck, it's a duck, right? We were told in March and April that this plan, the proposed plan, had plenty of parking. And it really surprises me that with the adequate parking that this plan has, that now we've had to, we're not only seeking to reduce the requirement of two per dwelling, we're also adding additional parking on south of Harvard. This is all after we were told that we had adequate parking for this development. And, you know, so it goes on and on, and now they're changing even more. They're adding parking here and there. Wherever they can add it, they're adding it. So we need to figure out what the duck is, because it doesn't have adequate parking. Now, that being said, just going back to...
Let me ask you for one minute, please. Nobody here agreed that we had adequate parking when we first started to put this together.
Right, but he said it was adequate parking, and the point is, the point is, there was the fluidity of the plan. Everything keeps changing daily because they're reaching a grasp in that, trying to figure ways to make it look like and appear that it's going to meet and not cause an issue with the parking in the city. That's my point. Now, just in the same instance, when he talked about the former use of this property to the current use, he mentioned 1,000 students and the faculty, but he made sure he said 1,000 students used to go here. I need to remind him that not one of those 1,000 students had a driver's license. Not one of them parked a car on this property. So that is kind of skewing the facts a little bit. You can't, the ratio is not there. I can guarantee you that the ratio of adults with driving and that own a car are going to be a lot higher on the property as it's going to be in the future if this is approved than what it previously was. Okay. Now, and just one more point before I get going, I want to do, to touch on the benefits. He sat here and told you that he thought it was okay, that he was giving you the same benefits that another, that would be attainable through regular zoning, but he's giving it to you now because he's here offering it to you. Okay? For the PUD, the planning of development, he is supposed to be offering benefits to the community that would not be attainable through current zoning means. And that's not been done, that's not been proven, and by his own admission, he is not doing that. He feels that he is met up just by giving you the same benefits that you can currently get. Okay. So now, I created this board, because our current city code, we all talked about, requires two parking spots per unit. And I want to talk about, because I feel it's very important that we do not deviate from that, because the way I've done this board is I've done how many spots? This represents how many spots would be taken up. If you require two spots per unit, with the total of right around 270, I guess it keeps changing, but you'll get the point. If you look at this, the blue represents what he wants you to accept as a lower standard of one parking spot for this loft and one and a half for this one. But the yellow represents the difference of how many parking spots would be required if you stick to the two, which I recommend that you do. If they can show you that they have adequate parking, then great. But the point is, is when you look at how many spots are available on this lot, and if you were to require the two per unit, there are only eight spots under, this is a little bit dated, because I guess they've divided a few more spots, but maybe there's 15 spots left available on this lot after you account for the 270-plus parking spots that the apartment units are going to require. Now, conversely, and there's 91 spots that would be, that he doesn't account for. Conversely, the church, the new lot that they were talking about, I guess gives approximately 96, 96 spots for cars. This is for the church use. On a Saturday recently, there was 80 cars there. Sundays usually average between 95 and 100. So right away, with the eight spots that are left over in the new lot, they are at max capacity. That is not including what would happen on Christmas, Easter, whatever mass they have, they don't have enough parking. I think you're flirting with danger any time you even consider lowering the standard from two to three. Okay? So I just think that, you know, regardless of whether you say, you know, if you look at the church, because we're talking about the apartment, yes, because that's what's being built. They mentioned that the church is only going to require 170. I think that's debatable. I think I hear that sometimes they're talking, now they're talking about plans of possibly removing the pews. But if you were to build that building today with the amount of pews that it has or the feet, I think it would require something like 330 parking spots. And the thing that concerns me the most, and this is something that seems to have been lost, and we've heard that this development has to happen in order to make sure that the church survives and it continues. Okay? And I feel that's really kind of strange, because by giving away all their parking and only providing for 170 at max, that does not leave any room for it to expand in the future, to regrow your membership, if you will. So I think that should be another concern. While they can say that right now that would be sufficient to cover it, if they're struggling with those numbers, shouldn't the goal be to make sure that they can provide parking for in case their numbers do come back? Because if they cannot grow those numbers, that is for sure going to be the death warrant for the church. And they've proven, and they've said by their own admission, that right now, the attendance numbers as they are with the parking as it is, and if you go by there when there's 80 cars in there, they're already parked on Harvard. They're already overflowing, yes, they're going to add to the lot. But I think there's not enough parking there, and really, it would be folly to consider lowering the requirements of two per dwelling. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, excuse me for coming up again. I just wanted to ask the...
No, you've got your chance. We've got other people that need to talk, okay?
Since I'm the most affected, I think I should have the most say.
No, I'm sorry.
I just have one quick question, which is to ask the deacon how many other proposals they entertained. That's all I want to ask.
That's not for us.
It's not our...
I did agree one thing. You know, you also agreed that you would give perspective views. And I asked you point-blank at the last meeting if you would give me a view from the neighbor's backyard and then his, the neighbor next to him, and I didn't see those in any of the sheets. And I know that's available, because I have halfway...
Please go on.
No, they're not there.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Michelle McFarland. I just purchased the property directly across the street, 2186 Coolidge. And my husband and I also live in Berkeley. We've been here for 13 years. I'm very alarmed by this. This was not on the table when I purchased the building, and I'm coming from a parking situation already on Woodward. So I would like to know, is the street parking going to remain on the opposite side of Coolidge from me?
I can't answer that question. That would be a publicity...
I think that this would affect, it would be public safety, but I can't see that it would, that anything across the street would be affected by this. But it's ultimately up to public safety.
When I was here in January, talking with you all about my development, it was agreed that we would have the overflow parking of the street parking for our heavy-traffic days, which is Saturday typically. And that seems like it's going to go away, which is going to directly impact my customers. And also, even if it did remain, and it will still be on my side of the street, the residents are going to park there, because the parking that is in this schematic is unreasonable. The church's parking, which is supposed to be exclusive for the church, is closest to the apartment buildings. Where do you think the residents are going to park? Not in their further-away designated spots. They're going to park in the church's parking. I know, because being on Woodward for the last 15 years, people will park where it is most convenient for them, and they do not care what signs are there, what the rules are. They will do whatever they want. I've seen it time and time again. And they had talked about assigning parking places. That's still not going to keep residents from having more than their allotted amount of cars. They're just going to park them off-site, most likely in the surrounding businesses' parking lots, which I can't give up any of my parking. I can't. I have to have every single spot for my employees and my customers. And they're not accounting for overnight guests. People who have studio apartments have boyfriends and girlfriends, people who have one bedroom, people who have two-bedroom apartments that are roommate situations have boyfriends and girlfriends that are going to come and stay the night. So we need to account for that. And I just think with many of the other citizens that are here, that it's too much for that property, you know? And I'm developing a property, which, so I understand that there needs to be growth in the city and we need to turn these properties over, but it has to be appropriate for the space. And I know that when I came here to try to get my business to move to Coolidge, not one person opposed a bridal salon moving to Coolidge, because it's an appropriate use of that property. In fact, it's an improvement for that property. So one more thing I want to add is that this is the kind of development that's going to bring in a lot of singles, which is what happened to Royal Oak, which was my hometown. And what I enjoy telling people now is that Berkeley is what Royal Oak was when I was growing up. That's going to go away, and that's going to ruin our schools. And it's happened in Royal Oak. I would never, ever send my kids to school in Royal Oak. So that's it.
Thank you.
Brandon Alger. I live in Meadow Farm subdivision of Berkeley, and I have good news. I'm not going to talk about parking, but this property is far and away the largest and most desirable piece of underdeveloped or undeveloped property in Berkeley. It fronts a mile of road in Coolidge. It's surrounded by well-kept, beautiful homes. It's walking distance from restaurants and shops on 12 Mile, on Coolidge, Woodward, and if you're really ambitious, from downtown Royal Oak. On top of that, it's in Berkeley, which in 2016 was rated by Smart Asset as one of the 20 healthiest real estate markets in the nation, not just in Michigan, but in the nation. The opportunity for a developer to put something here that really highlights the desirability and charm of Berkeley is immense. It's huge. So what's being proposed here? Are we getting something like the mixed-use development that we see in the West Village of Detroit? Maybe something like the office and residential development we see moving forward in downtown Royal Oak? Maybe something like a recent development in Plymouth that incorporates ground-floor retail with residential above? I'm the target demographic for this property, and I would like any of those three properties I just mentioned, but we're not getting any of that. We're getting the reuse of an obsolete school with a box of apartments being placed over the backyards of my neighbors on Oxford and Kipling. And this is similar to another neighborhood apartment, this proposal, which was recently shot down by the city of Troy. This is something that would fit nicely on Hoover in Warren, or maybe Greenfield and Oak Park if it were 1970. But in its current state, this is not a desirable development, and it would be a detriment to the neighborhood. The developer cites costs of demolition as for a reason of not wanting to remove or modify the subgrade structure in Coolidge. Removal is aggressive, I believe. Modification for grading to use the subgrade floor for mixed-use would be desirable here. And we know that on the scale of a three-plus acre development with proposed rents at market rate, which are relatively high in Berkeley, that this isn't a realistic option to limit the reuse of the obsolete structure and to limit the use of the property. My assumption is that they want to keep costs low to maximize profits. There are three entities that need to make a profit for this property to work out. And skipping that, ultimately, this is a commercial landowner with the church, and they needed to be treated as such. We can't subsidize them because of their religious affiliation, and to do so would be highly unethical. I do want redevelopment here. I think we all want redevelopment here. We just want the right redevelopment here. We want something attractive, something we're proud to see in our neighborhood. And an overbuilt, unattractive apartment complex with zero commercial use, zero office space, and a total of 5.8% of the units being townhomes is not a variety of use, nor is it something I'm thrilled to have in my neighborhood. At the meeting in April, you guys cited three benefits. They were a stretch, and I think some of you acknowledged that they were a stretch. The school is not a historical resource. It was built in the mid-'40s. My house was built in the mid-'40s. My house is not a historical resource. It's just an old building. The arc... The architecture of an old mid-century building and a box of apartments being placed somewhere on the lot is not high-quality architecture. In reality, it screams of constrained budget. 94.2% of the rental units, being apartments, is not a variety of use. The developer has not enhanced these in a substantial manner since April. We talked about, I said I wasn't going to talk about parking, so I'm skipping this part. In addition, the neighborhood would be highly impacted by the traffic, as also discussed. I don't need to go over that. And also by aesthetics. It's not an aesthetically pleasing development in its current state. That's something that's modifiable, but overall, the layout of the three structures that fit together in a, it's really a hodgepodge of buildings. It's not desirable. It's not aesthetically pleasing. And it would be a major lost opportunity cost for the neighborhood to see this kind of development go forth on a property that has such high potential in such a fantastic city. So, I'm asking you guys to reject this PUD application, but request that the developer and the archdiocese work together and come back with a development that really enhances the neighborhood, that works well for the city of Berkeley. Make it clear that we do want development here. I think the vast majority of us do want development here, but it's not the city's job to subsidize private business at the cost of a neighborhood. Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Hello. Rachel Pisantini on Oxford in Berkeley. I know you guys got this in your pocket, but I want to make sure that we talk about it at this meeting here that's public for everyone. Berkeley Citizens United put out a petition. And that petition was pleased to, we wanted people to support responsible development of the LaSallete School property, with the understanding that people who signed this petition were opposing the planned unit development. The property is not suitable, I'm sorry, the property is suitable for building under current regulations that we have. We don't need a PUD. High-rise buildings over 30 feet in our code-
Not a high-rise building.
Our codes do say three floors or higher is-
It's not a high-rise building. It's not considered high-rise building. And we need, everybody needs to get a hold of this and understand it.
You may not think so, but I think the residents would object to that, and I think it's our turn to talk and your turn to listen. Please.
Excuse me.
The high-rise-
Excuse me.
I'm asking you to listen. It's our turn. We had to listen to everyone else. We should listen.
I'm explaining something to you so that you ought to understand what high-rise is. You start talking about high-rise, and we're talking about a building that's 50, 60 feet high, five or six floors, and we're not there. We're down the, so we're under, not a high-rise.
I think we do need to read that, Kurt, because I believe we have that definition.
No, let's not worry.
Can I continue, please?
Go ahead.
Just for you, buildings over 30 feet should only be permitted in areas currently zoned for that. Shared parking agreements for the proposed apartment are inadequate. That is what the 550 people signed this petition opposing this and asking for responsible development. And I am asking for this petition to be made a matter of public record.
We have it. We have it.
As long as it's made a matter of public record. I have a couple more things to talk about. So, it troubles me greatly because the purpose of a PUD is to work with the community. That is the whole sole purpose, and it's to benefit the community. Mr. Tarabala said at the work session he was going to meet with the community. Having a rally in the sanctuary of a church and only putting the memo out to church parishioners is not working with the community. I don't go to that church. A lot of us don't go to that church. And they didn't get the memo until afterwards. So, I think it's really unfair, and it should have been for the residents who were told they were going to be able to work with this developer and did not get that opportunity to do so. The residents have asked, and I don't think Mr. Tarabala is listening, the residents have said they don't want a building that tall. I won't use high-rise, but a building that tall. The residents want the city to follow the ordinances. That lot is buildable. We don't need a PUD. The reason why the developer's going after a PUD is to skirt our codes. We don't need to do that. I'm not against development. I absolutely agree with the majority of the residents. Develop the property, but let's do it responsibly. The other thing that concerns me is when Chief North was talking, Mr. Barnett, you said that you guys are concerned about protecting the residents in a fire, as he was explaining the situation. When are we going to start protecting the residents that currently live here and their properties? And that's what people are asking. Interestingly enough, we received a letter from a resident who lives a few doors down from where this development is proposed to be built. Her name is Christine Martin. She said she lives at 2735 Oxford. And she asked that I read this letter to you because she couldn't attend because she has to travel for work. And she said, "My husband and I have been living in our home that we purchased in 2011. I will be unable to attend the planning commission on Tuesday, and I want to make sure my concerns are heard. We both grew up in Royal Oak and Berkeley, and Berkeley was new to us. We quickly fell in love with Berkeley and talked about the house being our forever home. However, since this development, we have talked about moving. We feel like we are getting pushed out because of this development that does not fit our neighborhood. While we are in agreement that the site needs to be redeveloped, we are in opposition to the current plans for a number of reasons. We are afraid we are going to lose property value, especially when a monster-sized apartment complex is four houses from ours." Before I tell you why I'm in opposition to this project, I would like for you to do one thing for me. I would like you to put yourself in my shoes or the shoes of my neighbors. I am located four houses from this development, and I would like for you to picture living in my home, or the home of my neighbor, who is right next door to the development or across the street. Think, would you want that big development built in your neighborhood, next to you, across the street from your home? I've been to the city offices and reviewed the plans. One thing that makes me a little angry is that everyone seems to be concerned about how much money this project is going to cost the builder. I was told by Amy that it is very expensive to remodel the school into apartments, which is why they wanted to build such a large apartment building to offset the cost. It has to be told to me that the builders have reported that the school is too expensive to demolish. How does the builder know this? Are we just taking his word for it? We need not to be concerned about how much money this is going to cost the builder or how much profit they will gain. We need to be concerned as to whether this project is right for the area and if it's right for Berkeley. The size of the project is too big. It is too high, too close to the neighboring properties. Have you driven down Harvard just west of Coolidge? Have you seen Harvard Commons? Do you actually think that it looks right for the neighborhood? This is something that should have been built in an area that is larger and more spread out. While townhouses themselves look aesthetically appealing, it looks ridiculous on that street and in that neighborhood. It is right between two bungalows and the towers over them. Why was this something that you okayed to build in Berkeley and in that location? Again, put yourself in the shoes of the people that live in the homes next to these townhouses. Would you want your house next to that? Would you be happy if your property value decreased because that was your next-door neighbor? The plans for LaSallete are bigger than Harvard Commons property. The apartment building is four stories high. That is going to be only 40 feet from single-family homes. While I noticed that some of the plans were changed to reflect concerns of residents, this development is still not right for that property. I promise I'm almost done. I promise. I would also like to talk about the increase in traffic that this property would cause. I've heard the builders say it won't increase traffic. There is an exit off of Coolidge that they would use. I've lived in my house for almost six years, and my husband and I discovered very early on the difficulty that there was turning left off of Oxford during certain times of the day. If we need to go north on Coolidge, we take Kipling to Catalpa and use the light. This is something that those residents will learn very early on as well, and they will take the other route through the neighborhood. The only thing that I want to point out in regards to the traffic is the safety of the residents and most importantly, the children. There are three schools within two to three blocks of this development, and there is a very busy park at Oxford and Robina. At times of the day, there's children of different ages walking and riding their bikes up and down Oxford. It is a concern that there is a potential for 200 to 250 cars cutting through the neighborhood on a daily basis. Please don't take the builder's word for it. He does not live on Oxford, and I want to be sure he does not live, and I'm sure he does not live in Berkeley. Like I said earlier, I'm in agreement to the development of the property, but I want to be clear that I'm not in agreement to the plans as they are presented today. I would like the school to calm down. I may be consider some work leaving buildings for storefronts that can bring new stores, restaurants. In Berkeley's master plan, it calls for townhouses, condominiums, low-rise loft apartments that complement and meet the scale of the adjacent single-family neighborhoods. Why isn't the master plan being followed? Why does it have to be, why does it have to be majority apartments? Homeowners are more vested in this community. The builder will argue that they change the townhouses to be for sale rather than rent, but that's only eight out of 130 units. This is one builder, one set of plans that has been presented. Please do not approve these plans. And please listen to the residents of Berkeley. Do what is right for us and our community, not what is right for the builder. Please do not hesitate to reach out to me if you have any concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Beth Baldwin. I'm a resident of Sunny Nolan Berkeley, and forgive me, I'm a horrible public speaker.
Okay. Go for it.
Okay. In 1956, my dad graduated from St. Rita's Catholic School in Detroit. It was the cornerstone of his Catholic neighborhood, his life growing up, and his memories. After decades of dwindling members, lack of students, and the diverse and ever-changing Detroit community, the school closed in 1975 and the church finally folded in 2008. In spite of its demise, the students continued to have reunions every single year at my dad's Royal Oak home until his death in 2013. And that's from, that's from 1956, not just his class. I grew up surrounded by this kind of devotion and attended Catholic schools my entire life. My point in telling you this is to show you that I absolutely do respect how important the LaSallete Church is to its parishioners. I know they mourn the failing of the school and their history being cut short. Times are changing, and dwindling support plus a very diverse religious community in Berkeley means that increasing their membership is very unlikely. I have loved living in LaSallete's shadow, hearing the carol on, the school bells, and the kids as the background noise of my own life here in Berkeley for the past 17 years. However, I'm very disappointed in the church for not taking our entire community into consideration as it sells off its property in what I see as a desperate bid to remain viable. I know they don't have the power over the building going up, but they certainly have power over sharing parking that isn't enough. They never spoke up in support of residents' issues with Harvard Commons and then invited their parishioners for a meeting that urged fighting for this developer and not for the Berkeley community, as though they had a Christian duty to do so. Their last-ditch effort at saving their church has them selling out the community that has supported them for decades, and I am not on their side in spite of my Catholic being. There should be no consideration for the church when discussing a PUD, the master plan, or anything else. It is not the community of Berkeley's job to rescue their failing business. I'm not opposed to apartments there that fit the space and the master plan. I hope there's something built there. I am for progress, but I do not want this monster built in my backyard as it's been offered, even with its changes. I want no more special treatment for yet another builder in regard to our master plan or the codes which our residents are held to strictly. I've gotten a permit for every single thing I've done to my house, from my roof to my fence, to my driveway, to my bathroom being updated, all of it. Dwayne's been at my house checking up on it. I want no possibility of overnight parking on our streets. It's been proven in multiple communities around us that it's not good for public safety at all. And if there's this much parking, eventually there's going to be, I mean, this much of a parking problem, eventually there's going to come to this table asking for on-street overnight parking, and that'll be our next fight with you. There simply is not enough parking for the needs of the buildings planned at this point. Traffic is directed in the worst possible way. We have the Vincetta Garage tiny by comparison to this project as a warning for the headaches that will come. It is not right to allow this to happen again in a way that will impact so many residents. I'm asking for the Planning Commission to make a motion to recommend the denial of the PUD to City Council. Not a reconsideration and not a postponement, an actual denial. Please do not let this happen in our city. It is not right. You are not looking out for the citizens that already live here if you think this plan is what our city truly needs to continue. Our city's amazing. The houses that are being built and flipped and everything right now are tripling the taxes. We're getting money. It's not an issue of money, except for to the people who are making a profit, and that's not the citizens. I want to point just one thing, and I know it's all this parking stuff, but I want to say that the splitting the parking thing, on a Sunday, you've got apartment people that, I say that apartment people like they're bad. They're not. I'm not against apartments. I'm not against renters in any way, shape, or form. What I know as a renter until 17 years ago is that I didn't care who lived behind me, and I actually lived in a Village Green apartment complex at John R. and 16 Mile for two years when I first got married. There was tons of green space. There was tons of parking, with covered parking. We each got a covered spot. There was plenty of room. There is not this room here at this space. There just isn't. And all Village Greens are not created equally, so throwing that name around as if it's something fancy is ridiculous. But when I lived there and all the other apartments that I lived in prior, I never considered the neighbors in the homes around me because I hadn't been a taxpayer. I hadn't been a parent. I hadn't been a wife. I hadn't been a, you know, child of an aging parent. None of this factored in for me. I was like, where's the McDonald's? Where's the Krogers? Where's the movie rental? Where's the pizza place? Do I have parking for my friends? And what kind of neighbor do I have downstairs? Are they cool enough that I can have a party and not get reported? Those are the things that entered my mind as a young person growing up and becoming an adult. On Sunday, that's most people's day of rest. You may get up and go to church, but if you don't get up and go to church, you're home. Maybe you go to the Easter market once in a while, but you're home on Sundays because it's your day of rest after working all week. Guess what? It's also the church's day to have all their parishioners to come to the church. You're going to have tons of parking problems. This just doesn't fit. I just think that the Planning Commission should absolutely ask for a denial of this PUD for the City Council. I just think it's wrong, and thank you very much.
Thank you. You did a pretty good job.
Okay. I'm going to go pass out.
You did a great job.
I'd just, I'd just like to address a few short words. My name is Kevin McDade. I'm a parishioner at LaSallete. My fraternal and maternal grandparents all came to what is today Berkeley around 1920. I put it that way because they were here before the city. Now, I hear the Johnny-come-latelys complain about this new development. Okay, I understand a lot of that. I really do. But my family has built Berkeley, and by the way, I sold the last family property in Berkeley, residence of 90 years just a few years ago. So, we built Berkeley. We also built LaSallete. I have a vested interest in both. I still consider myself a Berkeleyite, although I live, oh my God, one whole block south of 11 Mile Road. I still consider myself a Berkeleyite. I still live in Berkeley. I still bank in Berkeley. I think this is a good development. There may be some aesthetics that need tweaking, but I think it's a good development. I think it's good for Berkeley. When Harvard House Apartments on Berkeley Avenue was built between Harvard and Oxford, we all thought those property values were going to plummet. They didn't. When the Oxford Towers were built in, by the way, my backyard, I lived on Harvard in the middle of that block. That was, that was my playground. That was an open field mostly that we played in. We thought all those property values on Oxford and Harvard were going to plummet, and guess what? They didn't. I heard the gentlemen complain about light, and I appreciate that. I hate that. But you know what? You moved in behind a school building that had lights. I heard the gentlemen complain about light, and I appreciate that. I hate that. But you know what? You moved in behind a school building that had lights. Duh! Okay.
It's not night school.
Those, they're, yes, but there's the parking lot lights. That's what you were referring to. But, come on. The, the small amount of light from those apartments facing in the westerly direction is pretty minimal. You'll probably get a lot less light from that than you do from the current lights. I just think that this project should move forward. I think it's good for the city. I think it's, all right. There may be some impact in the neighborhood, but let's face it, you all built houses in what used to be an empty lot. There wasn't anything there before. Good God, I've got pictures of my grandparents' house where the next, the, the next house in the background is three blocks over and a block north. Now you can't see it. Guess what? A whole lot of houses got built. That was a big impact on that neighborhood. Times change. Neighborhoods change. This is not necessarily a negative.
Thank you.
Hi, Lynda Gabel Smith. I'm also not a good public speaker, so bear with me. I'm a 27-year resident of Berkeley. I'm also a LaSallete parish member. This is 2017. Times are changing, and not everyone, everyone's idea of a home is a three-bedroom bungalow. Change is hard and not always what people want, but let's be nice to one another. Mean-spirited things are being said and written. If you wouldn't say something to someone's face, you probably shouldn't post, tweet, or repeat it. Remember that just because you read something on Facebook or in newspapers, or you hear something on TV or by word of mouth, it doesn't mean it's true. Facts are not always being checked and accuracy, for accuracy, and people sometimes hear what they want to and/or interpret something differently. Groups of people keep, need to quit saying the word "we" like they are speaking for all residents of Berkeley, because if you haven't spoke to every resident and they don't agree with you, then you are not representing them. People run apartments and houses for all kinds of reasons, whether it's the loss of a home, a death, a divorce, if you're new to the area, or you're just starting out. I was a renter at various stages in my life. How dare someone say or think that I'm not committed to the community because I was a renter? That's just wrong. I know many people who rent in Berkeley. They are good people who fell on hard times back in 2008 and '09. They lost their homes, and now they rent. I also know people who own their homes in Berkeley who don't even know their neighbors. So what makes one more worthy? Because they rent or because they own? People are people. The city of Berkeley is not bailing out LaSallete. This is a real estate transaction between LaSallete and the Berkeley, Berkeley Coolidge LLC group that needs the site approval before this can close. If this appro, I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. If this proposal is not approved, what would be the next purchase offer? Will we get a Walmart, a strip mall, or nothing? And it just sits there undeveloped? This development will bring in new people to the community. They might not be able to live in Berkeley unless they can rent because they can't afford to buy a house because they're starting out. It may also bring in people who are ready to move into a one-floor living, downsizing their house, giving up home maintenance and yard care, and being able to close the door, lock it, and go on vacation without worrying about grass or snow. These are my thoughts based on all the stuff I've heard over the last four months, and I just think that this is a great development for the city of Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you. You also did a good job, too.
Hello again, everybody. Paul Jordan, I live on Tyler. Want to touch on a couple of things that kind of relate to this. First of all, earlier today, oh, earlier, yesterday technically, but there was mention of
Fair enough.
problems with flooding at Harvard Commons. And I was outside there, so I couldn't hear which one of the gentlemen made the recommendation to have the DPW come and give a report on whether or not there were any issues. And I think that's a really good idea. I'd like to encourage my fellow residents, who by this time will have to see this on instant replay, instead of complaining on Facebook and talking to your neighbors and doing all that other stuff that kind of makes us, you know, beat our heads up against the wall, I would suggest emailing Ms. Vanson, or emailing Mr. Barnett, emailing Mr. Baumgartner. Pick up the phone. Make a phone call and demand a response if you have an issue. If you have an issue with anything, contact the city. I'm gladly going to sit here and listen to you and sympathize with you and everything if you have an issue, but I can't do anything about it. We need to contact the people who can do something about it, and we need to hold their feet to the fire. Now, regarding this specific development, I want to say that I appreciate that they made some changes. Dropping the one floor, moving it to the other building. It makes the transition, maybe eases it a little bit more. So there have been some adjustments made. But one of the adjustments that I noticed was that now all of a sudden, this is senior housing. I was at the, one of the previous meetings where it was mentioned that this was going to be a development for young professionals. There was never a mention that I can recall, please correct me if I'm wrong, about this being something that's going to attract senior housing.
Yeah, there was issue, there was.
Okay, well, I missed it. The other thing regarding parking, sorry, 1.5 cars, 1.8 cars. Can anybody tell me who drives an eighth of a car? I don't. If I've got my eighth of a car, it's still taking up one spot. So you got to have the two spots. Got people that live across the street from me that are a typical, what I'd call typical family. You got mom, dad, and the two kids, four cars. So if you have those people moving into this development, where are they going to park? That's got to be a concern. And I think that's it. You folks have been here a long time, and so have I, so have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Lisa Kempner. I live on Columbia in Berkeley. Most of the stuff I had written down has already been addressed, so this is much shorter version. One of my biggest issues is, yeah, sorry, guys, the parking, and specifically the shared parking. It's not always a bad thing. The city planner gave you some examples of shared parking agreements that work well. They all have one major thing in common: they are relatively low-intensity parking. If any of those agreements went south, it wouldn't result in a Vincetta-like issue. If this shared parking agreement went south, Harvard, or Vincetta would seem minimal in In the last two years, the church has sold off land for Harvard Commons, this school property, and is attempting to severely limit their own parking. It is a huge leap to see the possibility of the church selling off the rest of its property in the future. This would leave the proposed development in a dire position with seriously inadequate parking if whomever decided to buy it wanted to build their own thing and needed that for their own parking. The other problem is, and some of this has been addressed with the postponements, but you're being asked to approve a PUD that relies on a shared parking agreement with numbers much lower than our code dictates, possible parking lots that don't exist yet, and possib, and those numbers are based on possible renovations to the church that haven't happened yet. So any one of those steps goes wrong, and the whole thing's a disaster. We're dealing with too many what-ifs and not actualities. What, where it stands right now, the church is required to have 330 parking spaces. They have 650 feet of pew, and according to the code, that's what they need. That's what it is today. So until the what-it-is today is different, that's what we have to base things on. So this project, I mean, it, as everyone has said, it's not impressive. It's not a historic building. It's just an old building. There's lots of old buildings. That doesn't mean they have to be saved. There's not a lot of open space. There's not a benefit. There's just not a benefit to the community. We can get apartments there. The back part is already zoned multifamily. We don't need a PUD to get that. And if this was really clear to the rest of the developers in the world that this was for sale, somebody's going to scoop it up. They scoop up every available property in Berkeley. Somebody's going to take it, but they have to know about it. When you try to search to find out if it was ever for sale, it's nearly impossible unless you know exactly where it was. Like, just to type in, you found "for lease, for lease, for lease, for lease, for lease." So somebody can build something beautiful and great there. This is not beautiful and great. And I don't think any amount of tweaking will make it beautiful and great. It makes it eh. So I would ask that you deny it and tell them to start over and come up with something that's beautiful and great, because that's what Berkeley deserves.
My name is Sue Dagel. I live at 3801 Tyler here in Berkeley. We bought our home in January of 1977. We've been there 40 years, raised my children there. I am a parishioner at LaSallete. My children did go through the, the religious education there. I'm 72. My husband is 76. We live in a two-story house. That's a problem right now as we get older. I would love to stay in Berkeley, but I can't stay in a two-story house. It's very difficult to find anything in Berkeley that is one-story, especially something that would possibly have your laundry there on that same floor. So that's one of the problems that I have, trying to find a place so that I can stay here where it's been my home for 40 years. There's so many things to say about what I've heard tonight. People have said that it's a choice property, that put it up for sale and it would go in no time. I happen to know it was up for sale for five years, and this is the only offer that was possible for that property, the only thing that met the conditions that the church had set. So it's not like there's people waiting to develop this property. There aren't. With regard to the parking, the proposition, the proposals for some additional parking, well, yeah, if we're going to move out of the present office building, which is not the right size for us right now, across the street, we would need parking across the street, and that's why one of the proposals is there. One of the other ones would be, yes, to help offset the space that we're going to lose in the parking lot should this development go, go over. Now, I don't know where people get their numbers as to how many people are parking at LaSallete on the weekends for church, but it's not the numbers it once was. I can remember when the church lot was full, but the community has changed. We are a parish of mostly older folks, mostly one or two people per household that attend the church, so that I don't see that the shared parking is a problem. I think if you go and count the number of people who are parked at that church at 5:00 on Saturday, or 9:30 or 11:30 on Sunday, you're not going to find a number that exceeds 100 at any time, except possibly Christmas and Easter. So I hope you will consider, this is, it is mixed, you know, mixed use. There is places, townhouses, for young families. As far as having families with two children and four cars in an apartment, I don't think that's going to happen. I don't know too many places where you have a two-bedroom apartment with two adults and two teenagers, and they'd have to be at least 16 if they have a car. So I don't think that's a realistic comparison at all. So please consider the things that I've said. As I said, as a senior citizen, I want to stay in this town, but I have to find a place where I can live, a place where I don't have to go up and down two sets of stairs seven times because I was doing laundry today. I have arthritis in three different joints, and I already have a knee replacement, so there's not a whole lot more that they can do. You know, I, I need a different kind of housing, and an apartment brings me that. You know, other than that, it really just doesn't exist for me here in Berkeley at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make one last little statement about aging in place because it's been brought up several times. I'm 49 this year, in two more months. My husband is 65. We have a 12-year-old son. So we kind of run the gamut of ages. Two summers ago, we had our first floor, only bathroom in our two-bedroom bungalow. We don't use the upstairs. It's not finished yet. But, so we have a two-bedroom bungalow, and we had our bathroom upgraded for the first time since the house was built in 1943. Took out the yellow-and-black tiles, and now it's beautiful and modern and lovely. And we took out that giant, huge iron tub, and we have a two-inch curb to step into the shower. Before the tile was put up, we had plywood installed in the walls where, in the future, our grab bars will be. We planned ahead because we intend to stay in Berkeley forever. This is our forever home, and we're more concerned with ourselves living there than the resale value after we die. So we did that. We also, at the same time, checked into first-floor laundry because I already need two knee replacements, and I have back issues and nerve issues, and I can't go up and down my basement steps very well already. So we've discussed it with our builder, or our contractor, rather, and we are able to take the tiny little, you know, work, play, and church clothes closet in my son's room, and it's the one that has access to the shower in our single bathroom. And all we have to do is run a couple pipes through the basement to the drain, some water lines up, and we can fit a stackable unit in there when my son goes off to college. So we will lose that closet space that's not much bigger than this lectern, but we will have one-floor laundry. We will have a bathroom that's suitable as we age. We can have those grab bars installed where we took pictures so we know exactly measurements and where they will be in 10 years or so when we actually need to put them in, or maybe sooner for my husband. It's possible to age in place in Berkeley homes, and anyone who says that it's not has not done their homework. You can get, from, starting from $1,500 used to $4,000 brand-new, installed, and warranted, you can get one of those lovely little chairs that takes you up or down your steps, and take a ride and carry your laundry basket on your lap, and go up and down as many times as you want. It's, there is possible. You have to open your mind a little bit, and, but you can age in place in Berkeley. You don't have to give up a home that's paid for and that you're still paying taxes on from 40 years ago and hasn't had a new tax assessment. You, it can be done. And I just wanted to say that in case anybody out there is watching, it can be done.
Thank you.
Not if you're in colonial, where all three bedrooms have no
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
My name is Kathy. I live in Dorothea.
Can you say your name?
My name is Kathy. I live in Dorothea. I'm really uncomfortable talking tonight, but it's important for me to speak, so I apologize. I've lived in Berkeley for 34 years, love Berkeley. It's this awesome community. It's a small town. I actually babysit three kids a long time ago when you lived in Harvard, Marty. But a long, long time ago is when I came to Berkeley. I love it. It's an amazing town. It's kind of funny because you grow up together, you stay in Berkeley, kind of like generational because you don't want to leave. It's a great place. And I'm hearing a lot of information tonight, and one of the things that concerns me is the word I heard is campus. When you think of Berkeley, I always think of Berkeley as a two-by-two. We're a small town amongst a big city. That's what's so awesome about Berkeley is we're very quaint. We're very, you know your neighbors. You grew up together. I remember Lieutenant North was my brother's football coach. Everybody knows everybody. You know the police officers. You know everybody. And that's one of the things, when I heard the word campus, I'm like, how does a campus fit in Berkeley? You know, it doesn't make sense. A campus is like in a big place. And there's this building, this, when I look at what was presented tonight, I think of this really big thing, and it's like, it's ginormous amongst a small city, and how does it fit in? And I'm hearing individuals share that they want to age in Berkeley, and they want to stay in Berkeley, and I'm all for that. I agree. Like, my parents still live in Berkeley. My father-in-law still lives in Berkeley. They're in their 80s. where there is ranches, where there are, where there are, where this is done so it does benefit the community, so where people can stay in their, in the area, whether it's renting or townhouses? Can they be flat? Can there only be 70 units? Can something be done so there's a compromise where the integrity and the charminess and the character of Berkeley continues? I think that's the biggest thing, is that everybody wants Berkeley to be Berkeley. That's why everybody comes and lives in Berkeley. That's why, like, the housing market is so crazy. I mean, think of it, how much it costs in Berkeley to buy a house. But that's what we love about Berkeley is because the neighborhoods, the schools, everything. So, I guess my question is, as the commission, as the, as the planning commission, you guys have told people what they need to do, like, come back and bring this, and how about this? And you've given recommendations and suggestions. Are you able to say, you know what, this is too ginormous? We're, we're a small town amongst a big city. Can you say to them, how about doing it at a 70-per, I think, unit scale? How about this? So that it keeps the integrity of the city? Because this is a very special city. Whether you realize it or not, this is an amazing place to be. I know how fortunate I am. We have the most amazing police force. They're there within a minute. If anything goes wrong, if you need anything, well, there's a wellness check, whether it's child check, whatever it is, the police are there. Your neighbors are there. Kids know each other, they take care of each other. So, why is it that we can't do that with a builder to say, you know what, awesome, you want to invest in our community? Great. But can it be done on a smaller scale where it keeps the integrity of the city?
Okay. Thank you. Kathy, one question.
Sorry?
How do you spell ginormous? Thank you. All right, I think we've reached the end of this.
People outside that haven't spoken yet.
Oh, there we go.
All right. You're okay. We don't have room for us in the, in Chris Riley, Oxford Road, Berkeley, Michigan. First of all, I'd like to say I concur with all the concerns that we've heard here today, the parking, the traffic, the size of the apartment complex, the lack of mixed use on the land. All of those are concerns that should be listened to and adhered to because that is, a lot of those are requirements for a PUD to be passed in the first place. There are two ordinance, and the ordinance says that there has to be a mixed land use. This is all rental properties with now a couple condos thrown in, don't even have driveways. People are not gonna drive around to the back of their garages when they're just stopping home for a cup of coffee, or dropping off groceries, or changing their clothes before they go out. Those people are gonna park on the street. The developer said, there's hardly any parking right now as there is because there's only parking on one side of Oxford Street, as, as you know, it's an emergency route. So, he's already said and admitted that there is no parking on that side of the street as it is. So, those townhouses slash condos should have driveways to get back to their garages, not two driveways around the side to go around the back because people aren't gonna do that. Second of all, um, there's, there's, uh, the integrity of the neighborhood is not being sustained, and that is paramount to this PUD even being looked at with the other seven criteria. If the integrity of the neighborhood is not sustained, you can't even look any further down the line to the other seven items. All the concerns that the residents have had, mostly from the neighborhoods, are all valid. The amount of traffic that is gonna go up and down Oxford, that is gonna double, or triple, or quadruple, the number of kids that walk up and down that street, that skateboard, that bike, those kids are gonna be put in jeopardy. That is not sustaining the integrity of the neighborhood. You must vote this proposal down, and, and I respectfully hope you do so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I live at 1825 Dorothea. And, um, a lot has been said tonight, so I'm not going to repeat. I wholeheartedly, um, support what Linda Gabel Smith said. And I would like you all to know that although we have not all come up here to speak, there's a good percentage of Our Lady of La Salette residents here in support. I think I can speak for them, and I just want you to realize that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody more? No. Okay, I guess that's public hearing. Close the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. What is the desire of the planning commission here this evening?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Dean Smith.
As we have with one, two, well, first, I guess, general comment. I appreciate citizen comments. I would like to postpone any decision we would make on PUD 0117 until the July 25 meeting. The, we've got information that we need, traffic studies, we've got, uh, the other Commissioner Smith was playing design police and has.
As usual.
Asked for, you know, different, uh, profiles of the building. There's, there's still a lot of issues at hand. Things, you know, we, many of the comments related to parking. I'm not sure that the community itself understands the value of an easement that goes into another property, how that actually does protect the ability to retain parking spots. I haven't heard back yet from the developers to how they're going to control the number of vehicles that their tenants own. I, at this point in time, I don't want to close a door on something that, that, you know, could be a good thing. So, I, I would like to postpone our action until the next meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second, back there.
Am I allowed to make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I think it's important. There was a couple of comments in the, in the public comment section that talked about, you know, zoning and how zoning could achieve, you know, we can achieve certain results with, with current zoning. Um, and I, what I, what I think was, was missing in the information, I don't know if, if the, if the public is aware, but a PUD is a contract, it's a contract with the city, and we get much more, we can ask for much more and much more detailed requirements and agreements than you can get under simple zoning. Like, the, the developer can say in a zoning situation, yeah, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. And if they don't, they don't. There's a little enforcement we have at that point because unless it was a condition of their approval. In a PUD, that's a contract. That's the same contract you have when you sign on the dotted line anywhere, and a violation of that is a violation that we have legal action we can take. So, doing something this complicated under a PUD behooves the residents and the contractor because, well, behooves us more. It's, it's, it's a lot easier for them to go over a traditional zoning than it is a PUD. So, it really is our opportunity to ask for all of this information and ask for these details and get these committals down in that PUD agreement. So, the fact of postponing it one more time means we're taking more bites out of the apple on this one and getting the very best deal that we think, you know, can be recommended to city council.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add some comments to here. I know it's late. I don't know if postponing this a month is gonna be enough time for them to get a traffic study.
Public safety to evaluate.
Yeah, and public safety then to evaluate it. So, you want to put a, you want to make it? Well, I'd like to ask them how much time they think they're going to need. You know, I mean, we could postpone, you know, they could come back in a month and we could postpone it again because they don't have that information.
We can order up, again, as I said before. Uh, it depends on the type of traffic study, traffic impact study that you may want. Uh, I think the first thing we would need to do is talk to your civil engineers, Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, get from them, as well as your Department of Public Works, to be able to get an idea of just what type of study, how extensive to, and our, our assumption is we want to do one that is gonna take on, take into effect Oxford, Harvard, its intertwining streets, as well as Coolidge, the traffic patterns that currently are in place, traffic counts to probably verify what they are as of today or more recently.
Right.
Uh, we, we can start that process. I would suggest that we would go ahead with the contingency of sorts for the July 25 meeting, and should we not be able to feel that we can, we can get it done within that short period, or that the review is gonna come from the DPW, or the, and DPS?
Yeah, and here's one of my concerns, too. Because this property is near schools, schools are out right now. So, to do a traffic study counting existing conditions right now would not be accurate for nine months of the year.
Well, there are, there are histories of traffic studies.
Yes, there are, but.
And we can, and we can certainly.
They don't usually, usually when they study traffic, they're not studying traffic on side streets. They're usually studying.
I understand.
We have the Coolidge Traffic Committee that's been meeting for like six, eight months, so there's quite a bit of data that's been picked up.
Okay.
For a different purpose.
Right.
But that's available. There's, there's a lot.
But that, that's my concern, is because, you know, so not being aware of that. So, okay. So, you know, I'm fine with doing it in a month.
And there's a modeling methodology for that, so we need traffic studies.
But again, I'm concerned because in that case, they haven't been studying Harvard and Kipling.
But we'll find out if it hasn't, if it's void anything.
Okay.
Yes, I sit on that committee, and, and there is a Coolidge traffic study in process. I can't tell you what the details of it are. They haven't really been shared with us. But I fully agree with Commissioner Buckler about the legal nature of a PUD. It does, uh, provide additional opportunities for the community. To me, the issue is, are we taking advantage of those opportunities? And I, I think there's something we, that I want to be very clear about, I think we need to be very clear about, though. At the, at the April meeting, many of us went through the seven criteria. The real issue at that pre, pre-application meeting was whether, um, we could find that the project has potential merit, has merit and has the potential for, um, meeting the requirements of a PUD. That, that was the actual standard applicable at that meeting. So, I disagree with, respectfully disagree with the developer when he says that this is an issue that's already been decided. It would be improper for us to make findings on those seven issues prior to the public hearing, because the public hearing is an element of the record that has to be in front of us before we can properly make findings. So, to me, it's not a closed issue at all. We, we have to make those findings. If we find that they're there, we can send it on and recommend approval. If we don't find they're there, we can't. But it's not, it's not a, it's not a moot issue at this point. If, if we look at it that way, we'll be making a mistake legally, legally making a mistake, I believe.
All right. Ms. Hanson, let's take a roll call for postponement.
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Dean Smith?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Martin Smith?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
All right. With that, getting it that we're in such a late hour, I think we'll just skip over liaison reports this evening and commissioner comments, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Yeah, I'll make that. Is there a second?
Well, Mr. Chairman, now that it's actually June, and this is actually Amy's last meeting, I'd just like to thank her for the, I've been here only 17 years. And, um, unfortunate this last year's been a little sour at times, but, um, but I appreciate the work she's done for the long time, and I understand she's been working at your new position for six months already, five?
Since March.
Since March? Okay. And you like it?
I do like it.
It's a good move?
Yes.
So, good luck on that.
Thank you.
I'd also like, this is a first in a long time. We have another petition here supporting the project.
Yes, we do.
And I would also like to be part of the record.
Yes.
So, um, we don't see those too often, so, it's a substantial amount of people also. So, just for the record. Uh, with that.
I would also like to second, a big thank you to Amy. Uh, I think I've been here about 11 or 12 years. You know, your knowledge of what has been going on in this community for a number of years is gonna be greatly missed, and your way that you can reach into that codebook and know where to find things, or not even need to go into that codebook and tell us what we, the things that we need to know. So, we wish you lots of luck in your, your new position.
I'd like to add, if I can, from the other side of sorts. She's been a true professional. I'm happy for your city that you've kept in service.
Can you, wait a minute, I want to, or Joe, or one of you I want to talk to.
I'd just like to add, you've always been very responsive to every question I had, and some of my questions are really off the wall, but you've, um, you've always been very helpful to me, and I appreciate that. So, good luck in your new position.
Anybody else want?
My experience on the planning commission, I think, goes back, what, maybe 14 years?
New guy.
Minus my, my year overseas. One of the things that we often miss here in Berkeley is, this is an aging city. We've got, most of buildings went up in the 1940s. They're aging out. We've got, our housing stock is, is in transition, and it's getting better. You know, you don't have to drive very far to find yourself in a community where people are not investing in updating and upgrading housing. A lot of those efforts, you know, the things that we talked about, we don't have front-loading garages, front-loading two-car garages anymore. We have roof lines that are architecturally good. Much of that is due to a city planning department, you know, building department overall, that has kind of kept tabs on what's happening in the world and said, hey, it's changing. You can't stop the change. You can get better, you can get worse, but you're never gonna stay the same. And, uh, my experience with, with Amy has been almost entirely positive, and the city of Berkeley has benefited greatly.
I agree.
You know, when I moved in here, people thought I was nuts because I paid over-market for the house that I bought. And if I could buy the same thing for what I paid for it today, I'd buy 10 of them. So, Amy, thank you very much, and you're gonna be missed.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I second that. I know I'm a relatively junior member of this commission, but I think your, your, your knowledge is, is second to none, and it's greatly appreciated.
Yes, Amy. Thank you for everything you've done for the city.
Is it there?
For the planning.
You did?
Yes, thanks, Amy. I, I know what it's like to sit in that chair, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who is here and who has stayed until this period of time, and for those that weren't able to stay, we certainly appreciate it. Again, I'll say it every time, I appreciate every time you come and every word you say. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you all for coming. Yep. All right. So, that motion was to adjourn. And I'll support it.
Well, Ms. Buckler, I'd already.
Hello, hi.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
O's?
Yeah.